Everybody there's to kinda dress warm when you come in here.
It is, it's not real warm in here, yeah.
No, I don't think we have any heat on in here.
I think it'll come on.
Is the thermostat turned up?
I don't think so.
No, I think it's, where is it?
I think it's up here. I don't know. I think it says like sixty.
It is, it's not real warm in here.
Why don't we have it on in here?
Is the thermostat turned up?
There we go. Hey Debbie, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Alright.
Did you see my day planner from last night?
No, I didn't. They were telling me you can't find, I didn't, I didn't notice you had it sitting there.
Yeah, I did and... I had to go down to church and help them before they cleaned up for that, that year.
Yeah.
Didn't even give it to them, I told the day.
No, and after you left, I didn't see anything sitting there.
Yeah. Well.
Yeah.
And you are?
I'm Ryan Bowling, I'm from Weaver School District.
Oh, hi Ryan, Reed Richards.
Nice to meet you.
Good to be, have you here. You're gonna tell us about the school a little bit, huh?
Uh, yes, probably.
Yes, and we can go ahead and get, we can go ahead and get started. We wanna welcome you to our work meeting today. And I, like I was telling Reed, I just noticed when I was pulling up the packet that it was not on our website. So if you need a packet, well, Morgan had emailed them to us, but... So we're gonna start off with Ryan Bowling. He is here with Weaver School District with the Public Information and Safety Office. And I invited him here because a couple of things we have on the agenda tonight. Have to deal with safety along the school crossing there, along fifty-one hundred. And so if we have any questions for him, or he can kinda tell us maybe the importance of what we're going to be talking about tonight and...
Let me just preface this with, I've been, I'm the Assistant Public Information and Safety Officer. I've been in this role all four weeks. Lane, our primary, his wi- not his wife, his daughter is getting married tonight sometime. So obviously, he wasn't able to be here, but he asked me to stand in for him and just first affirm the obvious need for extra safety measures along that road. Kids walking to school and for the ones that do, it is, it's a dangerous route. I'm sure you've all have been on it, I've been on it. So really, the district truly appreciates your consideration for adding additional safety measures and just doing what's best for kids. Any questions or anything?
Was your last name Molding?
Bowling.
Oh, Bowling.
So a couple of things on the agenda tonight are entering into an interlocal agreement with West Haven City to put an official school crossing zone at where the street comes across. And I don't remember, it's thirty-five twenty-five or thirty-five seventy-five where the Hooper students cross?
It's twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Sounds familiar.
So I know we've had some concerns and you probably have heard some too, the crossing guard doesn't feel really safe without there being this crossing.
I think, yeah, the... People are always yielding right away, recognizing the crossing guard, maybe being a little impatient. I know that's a well-traveled road. So I think their concerns were just having that little added safety measure that maybe get cars to see them and slow down a bit more.
Then on the next corner down at thirty-three and fifty-one, then also in our interlocal, we would put two pedestrian crossings. Because currently, we don't have a crossing guard down there. And as next, as of next Friday, we are not going to have a crossing guard on the other one either because they gave their two weeks' notice. And so if anyone knows of anyone that is looking, we desperately need someone, a crossing guard.
Been working on that for a while, trying to get somebody in and...
Yeah.
I know they're going to print somehow hiring signs and we talked about putting them all over the city, trying to get somebody in to apply for that.
And then down on the other corner, then they're just the pedestrian crossing, but it's they can push the button. It'll be like the one on fifty-nine hundred where they cross across our walking path that they can push. Because we also have students that come across from Ross and Ranch. And we're going to have them go both directions. So if they're coming, if they're trying to go across from the west to the east, they can push it. And then if they're trying to go from the south to the north. Because they've also found that even though there's a school crossing up a little bit further to the east on thirty-three hundred, students are cutting across that corner because then they get to the park, to the playground. And so we're seeing some issues with students there as well.
If only we could instill that a little more in kids to cross the appropriate place. But, I mean, if they'll use the crosswalk, even use the crosswalk without the crossing guard, it's a lot safer approach than just crossing anywhere they choose to, which I know at other schools, the school that I just came from, we had that issue all the time. Kids just want to cross where they wanna cross. So again, just recognizing the need for that and providing it and keeping kids safe is a fantastic thing.
It's like it's also been suggested, the speed limit on that fifty-one hundred south be reduced to thirty miles an hour. What are your thoughts on that?
I think a reduction in speed would be amazing. I don't know how that would impact residents or how they would feel about that. But again, it being such a narrow road, that I think a reduction would be a great idea.
I read through this, wasn't there fifty-five hundred on here too, bowling? Fifty-five hundred west?
That's all.
That's, that's on it, that's on another one, uh-huh, yeah.
So this, so this, I'm in favor of fifty-one, or excuse me, yeah, fifty-one hundred west, thirty-three hundred south to four thousand south. South of that, I don't think so. But on that road where the kids travel, I'm a hundred percent for the reduction in speed there. But as far as south of four thousand, I'm not so sure I agree with that.
Yeah. One thing we've talked about doing is just having a consistent speed limit of thirty miles an hour on all of our collector roads. And the only roads in Hooper that have higher than thirty are fifty-one hundred, fifty-five hundred, and forty-seven hundred. And we had met originally with the same meeting that we were originally with the school district too. And the sheriff said even encourage that we try to get some more consistency going because the speed limits change. And they said if we can get it all, then people just know. Because if it's going to be thirty further north, then why not just have it be thirty? And West Haven has agreed to changing it to thirty, and Weaver County's agreed to changing it to thirty. And then on fifty-five hundred, if you go further to the south, it's thirty. And then it changes to forty. And then, and then on forty-seven hundred, currently it's twenty-five. But then you get further, either on either direction, Roy just changed theirs on forty-three hundred to thirty. And we get further to the north, and then it changes to thirty. And so that was the reasoning behind that, is just so we have a consistent speed. And residents just know, on the collector roads, it's going to be thirty.
Yeah, I see that point, but I think it, I think, you know, what we wanna do is safely move traffic as efficiently as possible. Sometimes lower speed limits, I don't think is the answer. I would be okay with thirty-five. But I actually went, you know, tested myself. I drove thirty miles an hour.
I did too.
And, and I'll tell you what, if I get someone behind me, they're gonna dart around me. I guarantee it, they're gonna dart around me and I can't cause more problems than, than what we're... And I get the consistency, you know, but I think cities have various speed limits for different types of roads. I'm not comfortable with thirty south of four thousand. I'm one hundred percent where that school zone is, is to lower that, absolutely. But south of that on those two roads, I would be in favor of thirty-five, but thirty, I'm not in favor. I just don't think it'd be efficient. I think it'd cause more problems than what we're trying to solve. That's my opinion.
It's funny you say that because I was on fifty-one hundred going north just last week. And I was trying to go thirty miles an hour. Had somebody come flying behind me and they literally passed me going past forty-eight, twenty-five south, which was a double yellow line.
Yeah.
I'm just like, whatever, you know, it's just dangerous. And I thought, okay, thirty-five feels comfortable, but thirty was a little slow.
Slow.
For, for the wider world, that is. And I don't think, I mean, we call them collector streets, collector roads, but fifty-one and fifty-five roads, through streets. You know what I mean? Especially when the new freeway comes in, they're gonna be through streets.
Yeah.
The problem too with that with through streets is if the speed limit's forty, people go fifty.
And there's no enforcement anywhere.
Yeah.
We need the traffic trailer guy.
And so, and then if it's thirty, people still go forty. So that's the, you know, people are going to speed. And we thought if we got people used to slowing down on fifty-five, because you're right. As soon as they're working on when West Weaver goes through, it is going, and as soon as they opened it back up. And while they were doing construction, it was thirty. I don't know if any of you noticed that, the speed limit had been changed to thirty when they were doing constructions.
If I can say something?
Sure.
I was just wondering about on the fifty-one hundred west, so it would be forty miles an hour from fifty-five to forty-eight? And then it would slow down on the road? So we would have half the road being forty and half the road being thirty? Am I correct on that?
The proposal is to do the whole thing thirty.
Yes, the way you're saying Debbie is correct because, because West Haven has agreed and would like to change it to thirty. So, so starting at forty-eight hundred is a West Haven road on the east side of the road.
Okay, so would there, what would be the problem with, with having one more speed limit sign? And just having the whole road be slowed down? I think that would be more effective than having it be, you know, having them, being faster on the south end and then expecting them to slow down as they went on there. You know, if you can get them as they turn on to fifty-one to be slower, they're more than likely going to stay that way.
Hey Debbie?
Once, once they get on that road, it's pregame. They're, they're, they're not going to be slowing down.
That's the recommendation, Debbie. That's what's recommended.
Yeah, that, that's what we are going to have a vote on, a motion tonight, is changing that road to thirty. And that's the same thing on fifty-five hundred west, because if you go south on fifty-five hundred west, it's thirty. And it's thirty in Davis County, it's even thirty in Weaver County until you get to fifty-five, and then we change it to forty. So we're just...
Right, and I, I understand after fifty-five, it's just, it's just having, having fifty-one being two different speed limits.
It will.
Yeah, yeah.
She's confused, right?
No, no, she's saying that why are we having it forty and then having it changed to thirty? Why not just keep it thirty?
The proposal is to do it to thirty.
Yeah, the proposal's to make it on thirty.
Do a thirty clear back to fifty-five hundred south?
It says forty-eight hundred south right here.
Yeah.
So what is on the other side?
It says forty-eight hundred south.
It says forty-eight, so I saw.
So she's...
Find a box apart.
Yeah.
So Debbie's correct.
Yeah.
No, Debbie's correct.
Debbie's correct, so it's going to be forty because they want to change it at forty-eight where it starts.
So if West Haven wants to change it from forty-eight to four thousand. Sorry Debbie, you're right.
Anyway, Ryan?
Well, that's a good point though.
Any questions more? We don't mean to make you stay, but we appreciate you coming and any...
Uh, no, I don't. I just appreciate you guys even considering what you're considering. I think it's great. Anything that you decide on, any improvement will be fantastic, so we really appreciate it.
Okay.
I do have one question for you. Country View in Rocky Mountain, forty-eight hundred south. It's been, well, Country View's been there for forty-plus years and has never gotten any type of lights for crossing or crossing guard or, I mean, we have a crossing guard at the four-way store. But, but, but people have asked, how come we've never gotten any improvements in traffic control on that road? But it's been twenty-five forever. How do you, do you, do you hear any complaints about that road or any safety issues about forty-eight hundred?
I mean, in the short time that I've been doing this, no, I haven't. And maybe it's, that school's been around for so long that people just accepted that as, as what it is. But, no, I haven't heard any concerns on that. I know the boundaries are weird and maybe that'll change this year, now that the boundaries have changed a little bit. But I know they get a lot of, maybe they don't get a lot of busing students. But no, I haven't heard anything. Maybe Lane or somebody that's been at the district office a little bit longer might have some different information, but for what I have, no, I don't.
I know, people have complained that the signs say twenty miles an hour when children present, instead of having a flashing, you know, right?
So it's just kind of a suggestion?
Yeah, exactly. So I, I mean, we're putting all this emphasis on this brand-new school, but here's one that's been there for forty years and we don't even talk about it, you know?
Yeah, I agree that that's obviously an unusual situation, but again, to my knowledge, I haven't heard anything on that. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. But I mean, the crossings are neat because it's directly at the four-way, which is a controlled stop, you know, so...
I feel like people may be a little more cautious at four-way stops.
There's a lot more control over four-way stops, for sure.
And the speed limit is twenty-five on that road too, which helps.
That does help.
That it is really a slow road anyway, so...
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks again, everybody.
Thank you for coming.
Appreciate it. I wish I had a little more information on that, but...
You'd be a pro all the time.
Well, we'll see.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great night.
Okay, so any questions on any agenda items?
So what about that, from forty-eight to fifty-five?
Yeah.
If that's gonna be forty, and then all of a sudden, forty-eight hundred south, it goes to thirty, that doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, no, makes sense.
None.
It's not a real wide road, fifty-one either.
No, it's not too wide. I mean, we can, we can amend this, can't we? We can say we want thirty-five. We don't have to do what West Haven is doing. We can do what we think is best too.
On...
Ultimately, you can. The challenge would be if it's thirty going one direction and thirty-five going the other, that's all.
Yeah, I think, I think...
It'd be nice to have the two cities.
I think at four thousand, it's kind of obvious, you know, with all the school crossings and the flashing signs. That's gonna be obvious that there's fair enough warning that that is a definite speed change. I just don't, I think there's gonna be more problems, this is my opinion, more problems going down to thirty on those two roads than if we did thirty-five. I mean, I'd be willing to, I think that's okay. I, I just think you're gonna have people just driving like crazy on it anyway.
So, but all of...
They're gonna go forty, they're still gonna go forty.
Yeah.
Or fifty.
All of our other roads in Hooper are thirty though. Like all of our roads running east and west are all thirty. You go down to sixty-three hundred, it's thirty. Every other road in Hooper is thirty, except for fifty-five and fifty-one. And they're the only roads that are forty. And then we have forty-seven hundred that's twenty-five, which people have said, that's the nicest road we have in Hooper. Why do we have it twenty-five when the other roads are thirty? And that's what I just figured, it would make just them consistent, that any, everybody, anybody would know on any roads in Hooper, it's, it's thirty. And then you get into the neighborhoods and of course, they're twenty-five. And then UDOT governs their own. So we don't really have a say on, you know, the UDOT roads, but...
And at one forty-seven hundred, whose road is that, forty-eight hundred south to four thousand, is that West Haven?
West Haven.
Cause that's thirty-five. And then it jumps to twenty-five on Hooper side.
Yeah, I went from thirty to thirty-five recently.
Yeah, and they, yeah, and we talked to them too about it, just having it be consistently thirty. And the sheriff said they would really appreciate that because it is, it's thirty-five then twenty-five.
It drops as soon as you hit that four thousand.
Yeah, it does.
So let's make it consistent thirty-five.
I'd say thirty-five.
Yeah, but if we raise forty-seven hundred from twenty-five to thirty-five, I don't know, the residents are going to be really happy to have us raise it to thirty?
I think...
If we raise it to thirty-five.
Yeah, I see your point in like all consistency, but you know, like you go to every city and there, there are various speed limits everywhere. I mean, it just depends on the road and...
Debbie, what we...
She probably...
I mean, I just...
She moved on fifty-one hundred.
So basically, we're leaving Hooper at forty and we're changing West Haven's.
That would be bad.
On fifty-one hundred.
Oh, fifty-one, yes.
Yeah, fifty-one.
Except north of four thousand.
We're, we're gonna leave Hooper's at forty, the speed limit on fifty-one hundred?
Well, that's what we're discussing.
Yeah, that's what we're going to make it, we're going to vote on tonight. And Clay was one of the first cities that gave me this idea because they just said their collector roads are thirty and their residents just know that they're thirty. And there's, we're not the only city that would be trying to make ours consistent. I think that's...
And I, I understand that, but then we would just be self-defeating that purpose if we make our collector roads except fifty-one hundred west thirty. I just, you know, not that I just live there too, but people in my district complain about the speeds on fifty-one hundred. And I know that people are still going to speed, but if the speed limit's lower, their tickets will be higher. And we can always have the, the Weaver County Sheriff's Department speeding. They have a speed unit that would set up and, once we change these over, would set up and come and survey the roads more and give out more tickets like they did on forty-seven when they changed that speed limit over.
And they, they said they would do that Debbie, they were at that meeting. And they said that about sitting there.
Yeah, they really want that. So it sounds like Deborah, you would like the thirty miles an hour, is that what you're saying?
Well, lowered somewhat. I, if, if the road's gonna be thirty, I would like Hooper's have to be the same if it's gonna be thirty-five. Any, any decrease in our speed on this road, I would appreciate. Even if it's down to thirty-five. People, I, I can't tell you how fast people go on this road. I mean, it's, it's like a freeway.
Just from a, from a prosecutor's standpoint, it really needs to be the same speed either direction.
Yeah, sure.
Because if, if I try to prosecute a speeding ticket and they say, well, I drove that road going in, it was thirty miles, thirty-five miles an hour. And I went thirty-five coming back and you're giving me a ticket, we couldn't, we'd never get a conviction. So I think it's very hard to enforce. If, if West Haven changes to thirty-five and you have thirty-five, no problem, but it's gotta be consistent, I think.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Including the whole length of the road. You can't have it chucked out into forty and thirty and thirty-five and...
Same issue will come up when we try to prosecute cases. They'll say, well, I looked at that just five seconds ago and it was thirty, or thirty-five, and I thought it's challenging.
North of four thousand, is that what you're saying as well? Or are you just saying from four thousand to fifty-five?
The entire thing, from fifty-five hundred south, from six thousand south all the way to...
Thirty-three hundred?
Thirty-three hundred.
Because they have changed it, Weaver County's already changed it.
Hmm, not necessarily.
Just want it the same all the way through.
Consistent all the way through, whether it's thirty or thirty-five or whatever.
Weaver County's already changed theirs to thirty. So north then to thirty-three has already been changed to thirty. And from thirty-three to four thousand will be changed to thirty. So that's why we...
On the east side of the road?
So the sign's different than coming, coming south, it's forty, going north, it's thirty.
Yeah. Yeah, and I have had people ask me, why is, like our road, why is fifty-five forty? Why is fifty-one forty when none of the other roads are?
It's been that way since the beginning of time.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but that doesn't make it necessarily right. Just because it's always been that faster speed doesn't make it, we have the opportunity to be able to change it. And this is probably a good time, if we're already going to be changing fifty-one hundred, why not just change them all? And then it just says we're just consistently in Hooper, collector roads are thirty. And so then the people on forty-seven hundred, if we change it from twenty-five to thirty, can't say, well, why are you changing only ours? Well, we're not, we're just making them all consistently thirty.
I think everybody agrees that...
Think about it, you got a minute before you vote.
Yeah, I think everybody agrees that would be the same, clear, clear three, you know?
Yeah.
You'd, you'd put up a sign like they put at the end of, when it gets into Davis County, at forty-five hundred west. If this speed's too slow, go on another street.
Yeah, somebody took that sign down.
They did.
Yeah.
Well, and I even noticed...
It's not what it said?
Yeah, it did.
It's too slow, go on another street.
And I thought it was only Davis County that had thirty, but I was right. We were, I was already passed into the Weaver County side and there's still a thirty mile an hour sign. So that road, fifty-five is thirty up until fifty...
Sinclair.
Yeah, up until Sinclair, then we change it to forty. And like I say, it was thirty, it's been thirty, the last two years, they've been working on fifty-five because the road, if the sign was down, well, almost to four thousand on the west side of the road was thirty. And so we had thirty and then forty and then thirty, anyway.
No, motorcycle enforcement officer always sat right there on fifty-five south of Sinclair and he'd pull over twenty cars a day.
Really?
Cause it was a thirty mile an hour zone. When people finally figured out they needed to slow down, but that was like a speed trap. Anyway.
Yeah, like Reed said, you've got some, you know, think about it and, because this is something that we are going to be discussing during city council meeting and making a motion on. Okay, other...
So I do have a question on all these improvements on fifty-one for the school zone.
Uh-huh, yeah.
So if, if we're gonna have this road widened and construction going on in the not-too-distant future, are we spending all this money on improvements that are just gonna get torn down?
So that, then, what is going to cost money is the official school crossing zone, the two pedestrian, and they are on hold. And so when the road is done, they'll just be put back up.
Okay.
So there, there will always be, have to be school crossing zones there and pedestrian crossings. Again, people could say, well, there'll be a sidewalk on the west side of the road, maybe students won't ever try to cross. There's a chance, so they still, they still will, so...
So the agreement is this for the signs, not street improvement?
That was the prior agreement.
The prior agreement was already...
So this, this amends the agreement that you passed quite a month ago or so?
So I, I do have a question on this. So do these improvements, obviously, they are not included in the original WACOG?
That's correct. Well, that's right, so the WACOG's not paying for these.
Right, so my question is, is it would've been super nice to be involved in West Haven's, because it was West Haven's project, we had really nothing to do with it, other than when they had it all done, they came and said, here you go. Because all these, all these improvements, we talked about, like after the fact, say, hey, we need this, this, and this. And they could've been put into the original plan, I think, the original proposal. And now we've gotta pay for it. Where if we could've been involved in that, in the, in the first of it, we would've been saving ourselves a whole lot of money. So that's a little bit, you know, like, like when big things like this happen, they, they can't just like, you know, we need to know about them prior.
So, so one really good thing about this, the official school crossing zone is for the Hooper students.
Sure, yeah.
But they're willing to pay half. So, so we really felt like it was a win-win on our side because we're getting the school crossing zone and West Haven's willing to pay half. The same thing coming out of Ross and Ranch, those are our students. They don't, they don't need to put, and they're willing to pay.
I, I understand that. I totally understand that, but you know, as a, just as a business side of things, that it, it didn't go the way it should have. We spent a lot of money on West Haven too, our Hooper residents, so there's, there's given, taken. Yeah, I'm, I'm one hundred percent for all the safety of the kids, so I'm for this.
Yeah.
But I think we could've saved ourselves fifteen thousand bucks if we could've been involved.
Yeah, I think if that would've been in the original proposal, which was probably, what, two years ago or something?
I don't know.
You're right, you might've gotten more money from WACOG.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know what...
And I don't know how you fix that now.
You can't, you can't fix it other than...
That's, that was our discussion we had up at West Haven. You know, when we met up there and Bryce, with us, you know, when we went there, the transportation group, West Haven's project... West Haven's project ended at the end of thirty three hundred south, it didn't continue south over to four thousand. So their their improve, you know, what they, West Haven's went in and asked for additional improvements down fifty one hundred, that Hooper City was never, we were never involved with that.
Um, I I don't know on that, I I was thinking that it went part of the way down fifty one hundred. Okay, it did, it, the original improvements, if you went to the thirty, like the original amount went to thirty five twenty five because there was that amount and then there was an additional, they said if we're going to do that, we might as well do it to four thousand. And then there was an additional amount and I I can't remember off the top of my head.
You're talking about two different projects though, you're not, it's not all, that wasn't what all was applied originally.
Originally, and then they went in and did an amendment to their project and received.
But that was West Haven, see, that wasn't, that wasn't that.
Yeah, but that was, anyway, it went to include those Hooper students. And then from there to four thou, it originally went to the thirty five and then it went from the thirty five to the four thousand and then that was an additional, I think we each paid forty more thousand to do that. And then the the at the stoplight wasn't in the original and because that was through UDOT and then that was the fifty thousand that we each paid for. Our half, so.
Involvement from the very beginning is positive, no doubt.
There was, well, I think we need, I think Hooper has to pay what, I think we have to pay our share, but we should have been involved in the application for the funding. Not not just West Haven apply for it and then kind of write us in as a you know, we should have been involved with that.
I I think they thought we were though involved right from the beginning because I, because I think, you know, that letter that you had signed and I think Ed said that you were at meetings and you were there and Mayor Vanderwood said there were meetings and you were there on site, I think they thought you were.
And that went to the end of thirty five hundred south down to fifty one hundred west. And that's.
Yes, yes, you're right, you're right, thirty five hundred, you're right on.
You can go, you know, I, uh, cause I kind of wondered about that, so you can go over to the county and check with Brooke Stewart, for example.
Yeah.
She's she's the one who'll have those records and it'll show that's where our, that's where our when we all met as that committee, that that's where we stopped, we didn't.
It did, it stopped where the Hooper kids come out of this subdivision and it was that thirty five twenty five is where it stopped. And then they added on after, so you're right, you just said thirty five hundred.
Thirty five twenty five Ross and Ranch direction, thirty five twenty five south.
Mm-hmm, thirty five twenty five south to thirty three hundred. Yeah, so you're, so you're right.
It's the first left after, we start going north on fifty one.
Into Ross and Ranch.
No, Ross and Ranch is thirty two fifty.
Yeah.
So the first left is thirty, I don't, I wanna say it's thirty five seventy five.
I I know, I was thinking maybe it was thirty five seventy five too. Ryan City thought it was thirty five, but but neither here nor there. It already was there and we already committed and we already signed that original interlocal agreement. And and I agree, we've talked about this, we hope in the future that we'll have even a little more notice maybe even from schools because you know how you said like country, do they want to know? I've had a lot of calls now from Hooper Elementary saying, why haven't we ever made a safe walking zone on fifty nine or fifty five? Same thing.
So what interlocal agreement was signed, when was that signed?
The one that was signed about a month ago.
We were wondering about.
Three of us met with them.
Yeah.
Couple months ago, three months ago.
Yeah, it was.
In fact, I think we wrote that one fourteen days ago. This, we didn't do this amendment, but we did the original.
Yeah. Yeah, that's been, that's been.
You volunteered me, I think.
I think that was even back in.
I believe you did.
I think it was back in June maybe, cause I know I.
Quite a while ago.
Yeah, it was quite a while ago.
I think the frustrating thing on my part is that the school district just comes in and puts the school wherever they want and then they have their hand out to the cities for all these improvements in the safety. It's like, why don't they pull me up some money for all this stuff?
Absolutely.
And improvements and everything that they're building a school for, why is the city always on the hook for it?
Yeah.
You know?
A crossing guards, that's even bigger.
Crossing guards, same thing.
I'll I'll make a suggestion for West Haven, they probably, they need to do something in front of Quest like during certain times of days.
Well, and that problem is it's a.
It's a state road.
A state road and we went and met with UDOT, um, myself and Jared and Malcolm and Taylor and UDOT said that there is grants that we can apply for to get some of those improvements done, but you have to go to the school and the school has to apply for them. And then we're kind of like a um secondary saying, okay, the city will help. And so you're right, there's Quest, there's Hooper Elementary, fifty nine hundred and both the fifty nine and fifty five are faster roads and there has never been a safe crossing. So I'm gonna go meet with, I can meet with the principal at Hooper, but it would be West Haven that would meet with Quest.
So isn't there a stoplight at Quest?
No.
No.
Well, a forty seven hundred.
There's a stoplight at the east end of it.
Just before, yeah, just to.
But it doesn't really.
So the kids just cross the street right there.
They put a crossing guard.
They got a crossing guard. And parents do U-turns.
That's a pretty fast street.
Yeah.
That crossing guard's got her hands full, I I watched her.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And she's like just aggressively stopping traffic like this.
Yeah. Well, we know what happened up fifty six hundred before they did their big, you know, they had a crossing guard that was hit and and really pretty critical condition, so I think that's, and the crossing guard on fifty one hundred has expressed those concerns that people go too fast and they're not really stopping and so that's why then the school district came back and said, hey, would you be willing to put in this official school crossing? And like I say, come a week from tomorrow, we don't have a crossing guard there anymore, so that's even going to be a little bit more harder. Okay, what?
You've also got the kids that were moved from Free Elementary.
Well, you've had a chance to review the, that are now walking. This amended interlocal agreement, you've launched it.
I don't, it it does what it says it does, you just agree to pay half of the cost of putting in the signs in two different locations.
No, no, there isn't.
And change the speed limit, so the speed limit needs to be decided.
So all the money.
But whatever you decide, you need to have both you and West Haven do the same thing.
Still there after, it's all improved.
Yeah.
So we won't have to pay for it again, is what you're saying.
No, no. No, because they're just however on poles, so it's something however they move and they said they, it's not like it's going to be a waste because the sidewalk on the east side will be a waste someday, but they could in West Weaver corridor, but.
So I think it tells us what the costs are, doesn't it?
Fifteen nine, eighteen seven.
It's maybe eight thousand each city is split, so eight thousand on one and fifteen thousand on the other.
No, I think seven, seventy seven on the one.
So eighty two twenty six, isn't that?
So it's fifteen thousand and forty six.
So that's the, that's the C part, but isn't there also an eight thousand dollar on the on the A or on the B part?
Cost of the flashing stool estimated to be the eight thousand in each city, we're just splitting the cost equally. And then the other one, there's the the two pedestrian activated, so seven thousand, so it would be the seven thousand. It's fifteen thousand, but you know, there's two of them, so we would do the seven thousand seven hundred and then up above on that same page, it says the cost of the flashing would just have.
Governor knows at the schools.
So is it, is it eight thousand plus fifteen thousand divided by two, is that what it is?
Yes, yes.
I'd like to see that happen.
Yeah.
So it looks like it's about twelve thousand. If I'm doing my math wrong.
Yeah.
Well, and there's a payment on on two as well. Purchase of traffic control devices, temporary path instruction, thirty five hundred dollars.
We're talking about this in our local agreement, please say.
So will will there always be two crossing guards on the fifty one or less?
Well, there's there's only, there's only one. We don't have one down on thirty three, that's why we're doing those pedestrian ones where they just push the buttons.
Oh, I see, I gotcha.
Yeah. So.
So the only one we have will be.
The only one we have is there. Eventually, maybe when Ross and Ranch Base Two is done and maybe if there's thirty, forty kids coming, then maybe at that time. But again, that would be Hooper's responsibility because there are Hooper kids coming across. There's not any students coming from West Haven.
So do the improvements call for a sidewalk on both sides, fifty one, all the way to thirty three?
All the way to thirty three.
So at some point, we won't need this crossing guard, we'll take the sidewalk all the way down to this one, maybe this crossing guard to thirty three hundred.
Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah, we could do that.
Okay.
Um, I agree with your saying though, I wish the school would pitch in too, but they but they don't and they won't.
They don't at any city?
They just have their hand out.
No, I actually called the kitchen, or you had said, cause I said, why don't they, and I called our, the school district to see if we've been helping with the school crossing guards and I said, no, they don't.
Yeah, so there's uh eight thousand twenty five.
But but this is, this is the new one, did you get this?
Yeah, I think you got it.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's the same thing, it's just the other one has all of the first stuff.
Fifteen thousand, I see. What's seven?
So the costs are.
Plus that eighty two twenty six.
Eight thousand.
Oh, okay.
Fifteen thousand and three thousand. And the city would say, yeah.
The half, the half, okay. Then like I know I read something about sharing the cost.
Yeah, so West Haven, yeah.
Okay.
So do we have the council assignments again on the agenda tonight?
I I don't, I don't know, Dale and Debbie asked for that to be on.
Cause I had, I had some questions on that.
If I don't do that.
Did you, did you want to discuss this now, the questions?
Yeah, well, cool. So like my, uh, for example, one of my assignments was the traffic trailer. So my question is, what what is that assignment?
You can move it wherever you want.
You know, so so we had discussed that before and I had, and so I'm glad you brought this up, I kind of went through some, maybe some new changes we could make, usually we do this in January. So I don't, I didn't know, but if you wanted to talk about it tonight, Debbie's not here. Some of these, I mean, I mean Debbie's here but not here to see my handout, Debbie, so I I apologize.
Do you hear us, Debbie?
Yeah, I'm hearing.
So some things I I added on a list are things that we had assigned as city council assignments but are things that the city staff actually is responsible for. And one of those, what, which we talked about before was the traffic trailer because it, we're having Cody do it, who is our roads supervisor.
But before that, I mean, that's what, that's what you decided afterwards, but the council had already decided this and so what was the reason for the change? Let me just tell you how how it used to work.
Okay.
Generally, you know, uh, whoever was assigned that, they would come over and get a a list from the Hooper City, someone had called in and requested the assignment. The trailer was moved to that address, then it was programmed in and then when I was assigned the the traffic trailer, I would get, every time someone sped, I would give an email saying, this is the time, this is how fast they're going. I would put that report together and then sent, take it over to the sheriff's department. And then they would know to, then we were working with, you know.
So does the sheriff not monitor the the sign? I thought it was his sign.
No, no, it it comes to us, it's for shoes. So wi- without that, without those steps, that traffic trailer is, it's of no value. In fact, where is the tra- like today, where is the traffic trailer today?
I I don't know.
We we don't know where it is and where are the, where are the reports going?
So let me just explain a little bit, so it's, it works the same way now as it did before, only it's under the um direction of our roads. So they, we still have a list that is called in, they still move it and we still put people on that list. The report, we had to, you have to pay yearly in order to get that. It had expired and so we re-signed up for that. And so that'll go to Stephanie, she can get the report, it'll go to the sheriff. So everything happens exactly the same, it just makes it a little cleaner to have it in-house because city council members are going to come and go, but Public Works is always here, so.
Well, but that, see, that's my question on the assignment. So if we, if we receive an assignment and that's what the council approved, then who changes it? Like, could you go down and change any assignments, say like you decide to that going to the, you know, the Weaver Fire District should be in-house, then you just make, you arbitrarily make that change?
So we did talk about it in a work meeting, we had already discussed it about how it was, it would be better to have it under Public Works. So it wasn't just something that I just arbitrarily changed that we talked about.
Well, hang on a second, let me try and hear, so so the, all these assignments were done by motion, we all noted?
Yeah.
To the city council.
Yeah.
So I think that's, that's how we should operate our city council, we shouldn't make changes like, oh, we think this, yeah, we did discuss it but I think you were the only one that wanted to make the change. I think Dale did a great job. And if he's willing to do it, we motioned him and approved him to do that responsibly, let's let him do it.
But but we also, if you remember, we talked about the legality, if a work truck is the one that's taking it and something happens, that's one thing. If it's Dale's personal truck that takes it and something happens, who's responsible and we had, or we had talked about that.
Well, I don't, I don't know, he has to be the one moving it, but I do think he should be getting the reports.
For sure.
And then he can let us know.
And I could use the other truck too, I mean, I could have used.
And if you still wanna get the reports until January and then we can discuss this and then make new assignments, then that'll be fine.
Well, let me just make a point here, the way it is today, where is the traffic trailer and who's getting the reports?
And he should, you should know where that is too.
So no one had been getting the reports because it expired.
Well, no, I did, I, in fact.
And then it expired, right, and you, we weren't getting them anymore?
Well, up until, I thought something had been changed in-house here.
Yeah, no, no, it it expired and Stephanie came to me and said, we need to re-sign up for this because we're not getting the reports.
Okay.
And so once we signed up for them, then then I'm assuming they're getting them again and it's going to Stephanie. So, but no, if you wanna get those reports, you can get the reports and still have Public Works be changing them. But like I said, I, you know, I may went through because like, like one of the assignments on here is newsletter. Well, really, it's the city staff that does the newsletter. It like the code enforcement is, they're doing it, Public Works should do the traffic trailer. Um, somebody had the assignment of cemetery, but really, what is city staff, I mean, um, city council doing as far as cemetery? Transportation, what are we doing with that? Storm and wastewater, so some of these assignments on here are really being done by city staff, not by city council. And we have on here before, oh, go ahead.
They used to report to somebody.
I was gonna say, the way that I I figured it was, yes, staff will do it, but as a council member, we are to be informed and help and do whatever we can in the, in the situation, so that staff member, say for the community events or the youth council, you know, whatever, that staff member, that's my, my assignment. So I work with Erin and we work together, it's not just her.
Not you just doing everything.
And it's not just me, it's I, that's how I saw it, it's like we work together on these things with the staff member.
Well, and I I agree with that, but for instance, everybody is on community events and how many city council members helped with the Halloween hunt? It like, all of city council is over, no, no one did and no one even came except for Lisa. And so that's when I was going through these, I thought, would it be more effective to have a song on there?
You're saying no one ever came?
No one came.
How many else on the menu?
How many came to Halloween hunt, Lisa?
Who who helped put up the?
Everybody.
The.
Luminary's or?
Spook alley.
Well, I guess you did, is that what you're complaining? Okay, but anyway, I think it would be more effective to have a city council member over community events that actually is reporting like Lisa's over youth council, so I think it'd be more effective to have Lisa be community events and youth council and then she can directly report to Erin and and ask, what do we need and then come back and give assignments.
And see, so your question was, why did that come up? Like, why is that on the agenda tonight? Well, it's obvious not what we decided the first year isn't, isn't working today, but but it did at one time. There was, we actually gave reports on things and then all of a sudden there started to be changes and no one, I mean, they were just changes, so so who made them?
Well, well, we talked in a work meeting and everybody, we discussed it.
We didn't all, I don't think everybody agreed to that in a work meeting.
I don't, I don't remember in that work meeting that we had anybody saying, well, no, we still want Dale, you to drive your truck and go take the the trailer.
What was talked about then though is that I would use, I could use a city truck to move it, if if that's how the assignment was, but it it's obvious that things have changed and it hasn't been communicated very well. Because it, like I asked the question right today, where is the traffic trailer? Who's getting the reports? And at one time, that was a a clean answer.
Well, I don't know if you would have ever asked in city council meeting, where is the traffic trailer, if everyone would have known.
Where the traffic trailer?
I think we asked one time because we're like, cause somebody knew where it was.
But I, but I would.
If he was in charge of it, he wouldn't know.
Yeah, but I mean, not all of us would have. And if you would ask Cody, if you would ask Jared where the traffic trailer is, yeah, they could tell you exactly where it is. And if we're getting the reports again, because now we've re-signed the contract, staff can tell you exactly where that report is. It hasn't gone away.
Well.
So.
But it's gone away from Dale and that was his assignment. So I think he's just trying to figure out what part he plays in it.
I think the during minimum, he needs to be included in the report.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if that's the assignment, I mean, I think we're, maybe you're not getting my point.
I am getting your point.
That we made these, these assignments, then all of a sudden, they go away. And, and now we really don't have a way to report to the city council about them. I don't have a way to come to report to the city council some of my assignments.
Yeah. And we do need to do better about reporting our assignments. That's one thing I think this should be part of our work meeting is, because everybody does have assignments that they should be reporting on and we're not. Because I don't really remember the first, up until that change, like eight months, ever getting reports on that. So if you want to from now till the end of the year, get the reports. And then in January, we redo assignments anyway.
Well, I think, my, my point is, is these things are being done and the city council is not, not part of it. It was just done.
Not clearly, we don't know about it.
Well.
No, there's no, that, that is just happened.
Well, it, it didn't just happen. We talked about it in a meeting and I remember.
I remember that one talking about it.
Yeah, I remember talking about it, but.
We did. We did. It was discussed.
The main reason was the liability.
It was the liability.
The liability of, of using something other than the city truck. And I, I think my thought was, you need to look at the insurance and see if it covers private owners of vehicles doing city business. I don't know whether it does or not. Uh, but if it doesn't, then it clearly ought to be done with a city vehicle.
Sure, and it should, it could have been moved with a city vehicle. But I don't think that was the, the point. I mean, I would have easily adjusted that if that's my assignment. I would have come and got the, fly to Coleman.
Well, I guess that's another thing we have to find out is as, if you're not an employee, if you're covered on the insurance if you drive it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we, so we have driven that truck to conferences. We, we've taken it to the Utah League of Cities in Town.
So we need to figure that out.
That's a good idea.
Well, that's even a better reason to check the insurance.
Yeah.
Yeah, or have you ever driven, have you ever driven?
I have not. I have never driven it.
A city vehicle.
I have not. No, I have not.
One, one thing I, I'd just like to interject is that um before, I, I know the things that I was involved with, whoever was working on them always included me and we would work together on it. It wasn't as if like, like um I was on moderate income housing. So in the past, I've always helped with that. And this year, I think we all were on it. And it would have been a good thing for maybe all of us to have had a work session or something to roundtable that. Just things like that, that we haven't been working as, like you've been, it seems like you've been working with city staff on these things instead of the council. And that was just how we used to do it, with the council would work with the mayor on these things rather than the city staff, if that makes sense. And um that's, that was how it was and that's why we had these assignments.
Sure. And that's, you know, in this one, but we can wait till January or we can discuss it during city council meeting. Because like budget and finance, that's all city council members' assignments. I mean, everyone has to work on that. Moderate income housing plan, we all have to work on that, which come this fall, we need to start on that again. And the same with approval of ramp grants. There cannot be in a ramp grant applied for if city council hasn't voted on it. So all those things already are on here. So I, I think that's something come January, unless if you want to do it at another time, um before then. I think there's just some of these assignments we need to look at. One of them is mosquito abatement, because come January, we won't have Cindy anymore and somebody needs to do that. One thing that wasn't listed on the council assignments before, which I think should, Debbie does the help the Utah community. So I think that should be on there. Um, there are meetings, like the animal control that needs to have people there, like they say, like once a quarter. Um, there's the emergency management, like they're trying to find somebody, uh, like a homeless shelter. I mean, I think there's other responsibilities that maybe city council should be over. Maybe and then just we all help with other things, but not necessarily be at a specific assignment.
Sounds like a little more discussion. I need to take a minute before.
I think more discussion.
Oh, I have to. I gotta, I gotta kick you off this meeting and get the one going for city council. So you have to jump on that one.
Okay.
So, last year's legislature passed a re, a total rewrite of both city, county and state ethics rules. And um we've been waiting now for quite a few months for the League of City in Towns to come up with their version of what uh people need to sign. And that's not happened. So I think we need to do something here that'll take us over to the first of the year, when we do have an obligation for everybody to fill out a pretty complicated form about things that you have in your life that conceivably could be a conflict with the city. So what I've done is put together a, a very simple ethics pledge. And I've attached to that all of the ethic rules that relate to the city. Uh, some of those are city council rules passed by you. Most of them are state rules. Some of them uh talk about having to file a, a form and put it on your website between January one and January thirtieth. Uh, that didn't pass until mid-year this year. So our assumption is that means next year. So when you see that, uh, keep in mind that we'll have to do something new if the city, League of City in Towns doesn't come up with a form for us in January. But I think this ties us over. So what I thought I'd do is give each one of those, letting you take a, a month or so to study it. And then hopefully, uh, if you have questions, we can answer them. And, and you will have questions. It's pretty complicated. But it, basically what it does is, is cover, uh, it, it makes it clear that you, you can't take a bribe. If somebody's paying you to, to vote a certain way or paying you to give them inside information, that's a criminal violation. That's always been true, but it, it outlines that very clearly in here. Uh, but probably more applicable, uh, is it requires you uh do a disclosure of any time you have a conflict with anything you're involved in in your, your own lives and the city. So if you work for an entity that's regulated by the city, you have to disclose that. Doesn't mean you can't continue to operate, you just have to disclose it. So those are the things to take a look at as you read through it. As I said, it's a lot of material. And so we'll give you a month to go through it and then we'll spend a little time at a pre-meeting talking about it and answering questions.
Okay. So should we wait and not do that till December? Or do you want it at our next city council?
I won't be here to the next meeting, so I'm hoping we wait till December.
Okay, we'll plan on December. Okay, okay, sounds good. Okay. What is your cap rate?
Did I take too long, right?
No.
No, you're fine.
Recording in progress.
Switch chairs up.
Yeah.
Did she get a packet?
I did get a packet.
Lucky us, yeah. Oh, you're, you're by reason now.
Oh, you know what? Uh, they, we kind of got, they went to the house twice.
They have these little musical chairs in your back. We'll see if we can produce a. And I'm on the committee for the, uh, crew. We worked together, made one.
Are we ready to start? Malcolm, Jamie, are we ready to start?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I.
The staff of work is fine.
That's a film.
Well, that was true, that was true.
We can, we can some things, combine some things.
So there's a separate group in this combined.
Yeah, quite clear.
You're responsible.
You're responsible.
You're getting it.
We would like to welcome everyone to our city council meeting. It is Thursday, November seventh, twenty twenty four. We're always happy to have you here. We are going to go ahead and have our pledge of allegiance by council member Bowers, and then I will open with the reverence.
Okay, everybody please stand. And repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly father, we are grateful that we can be here together tonight in the community of Hooper. We are grateful this night for all of our freedoms that we live in this country that we have. We are grateful for those that serve our country. And I ask thee to please bless those that are our enforces, that are out serving and protecting us. We're grateful for our residents that live in Hooper. And we ask thee that we will always feel the peacefulness and kindness that we have here in our community. Now, as we discuss things tonight, we ask thee to be with us. Bless us that we will be able to always keep the residents' minds and thoughts. And we will be able to do those things that are best for our city. We are so grateful for all that we have. And we say these things in the name of our son Jesus Christ. Amen.
Okay, um as far as upcoming events, maybe just one announcement some of you have maybe saw on Facebook, we had a little glitch with our billing. And so if you received your bill and it looked like you were double billing, you, you were not. We just had a problem with the printer and we're also having some problems with our phones. We're in the process of getting them reset up. So everyone's actually, when they call, it goes to the correct extension. So just maybe have a little bit of patience when it, when it comes to that. The first thing on our agenda then is our minutes. Has everyone had a chance to read through the minutes? And also I apologize, I didn't realize till tonight that the packet did not show up online. So I apologize. That was emailed to all of us. When I went to look to make sure it was there, it was not. And so we'll try to explain everything as carefully as we can. Um, I know we have some slides. We can pull the packet up when that time comes, so everyone will be aware. So um again, I apologize for that. So with the minutes, has everyone had a chance to review those? And I also too, I um want to excuse Debbie Margoni, she's on Zoom. She's at home sick. And so when you hear her voice, you will understand why she stayed home, but she is part of this meeting and will be able to vote um through Zoom, so. Okay, any questions, comments on the minutes? Anybody see any corrections?
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes from October third, twenty twenty four.
Okay, the motion was made by council member Hale. Is there a second?
No, second.
Second was made by council member Rokovs. Any questions, comments on the motion, discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passed. Okay, um as far as we don't have any discussion, items, reports, presentations, public hearings. So um the first thing we have on our agenda is a discussion of motion on council assignments. So council member Bowers, have you requested for this to be on the agenda?
Right. And as we reviewed in our prior meeting, uh, my concern about this is we had council uh member assignments and they were approved at the beginning of the year. And then as the years progressed, it seemed like those assignments have changed. And, and I might be specifically talking about me. The assignments that I saw at the beginning that were motioned on and approved, uh, whether it was a lack of communication, I'm not sure. But I just had a couple of items that I, that have changed as we discussed, like the traffic trailer. Cause there was a time, as I explained, when that, when I had that assignment, that I helped in moving the traffic trailer. I knew where it was located. And then I also received a report saying, this time of day, this speeder went through the traffic sign. And it told me how fast they were going in that zone. Then I would accumulate those records and then I would send them over to the sheriff's department and then request a deputy be there at those times of the day. So today, as I brought up earlier, I don't think I can give a report to the council on where is the traffic trailer today and what's happened to the reports. Now, I realized that uh there was maybe a miscommunication on which truck I was supposed to use to help move the trailer. But um, and the reports, maybe we hadn't updated the feed to make sure that those reports were coming. But uh maybe as you indicated earlier, the reports are starting again and they're coming here to the city, but I haven't seen them for a while. So my question is, what happened to the assignment? I mean, is, is it legitimate? I mean, it, it was, and it was working, but why isn't it working now?
So if you remember, we also discussed this in work meeting with those that weren't at work meeting. So it was several months ago, we discussed in a work meeting about the issue of liability. So if a city council member is driving a city truck or their own personal truck, does the city's insurance cover someone else? And at that time at the work meeting, we discussed it and felt like, and, and you're saying now that you didn't agree to that, but I thought through that work meeting.
No, I, I don't think we had a real understanding as what, what was going to happen. You know, obviously the assignment was changed, as I indicated, because right today, I don't know where the traffic trailer is. And this is just an example of an assignment. I don't know where the traffic trailer is and I don't know where the reports are going, if we're getting them again. So how, so that, so how does that tool of the traffic trailer, how does that help? How does that, how do we use that as a tool that's going to help reduce speeding wherever it's located?
So how that is functioning today, if anybody is interested in having the traffic trailer on your road, then you call into the city. Stephanie Britt is the one that is assigned to that here in the city and she makes a list. I can tell you it's quite a comprehensive extended list. And so um don't get discouraged if you call in, it doesn't show up in your street that very week. Because it won't, because there's probably ten to fifteen names on that list. And that assignment then, as we discussed in work meeting, was going to be under the Public Works Department. We have a street supervisor who is now over that traffic trailer. And so he goes to the top of the list, takes that traffic trailer and puts it there. Because he is covered on the insurance to be covering the truck when he drives that. Along with that, and we were not aware that our, it had expired until Stephanie came and said, brought me the invoice and said, we need to pay this. Because our agreement, we have to pay to get that report, had expired. And so we have signed that, sent that back in. Whether those reports have started again or not, I'm not sure. I don't remember the exact date that Stephanie brought that to me. So I don't know when that did. I don't know when the check was cut to pay to them. But when those reports come in, it does go to Stephanie and it does go to the sheriff. And so the whole procedure is still the same.
Well, no, I don't, I don't think it went to the sheriff's department. Then it, it was coming to me. And my point is, is that how as a city council member, if I'm given an assignment, if there's changes made and I'm not in the loop? Like, like you explained, you went through and you explained how it's working today, but never in that process was the city council member who was assigned that, part of that.
Except for you were part of it because you were in the work meeting when we talked about it.
We were in the work meeting, but, but like I say, in the work meeting, we talked about not, not necessarily the changes that were going to be made, but the only thing we talked about in the work meeting was the liability of a truck. That's, you know, where I wouldn't be moving it with, with, with a personal truck.
Well, we did also talk in that work meeting about that public, being under the um umbrella of the Public Works Department. We did talk about that.
We, we talked about that with the motion. So here's what I think should happen. We need to find out on our insurance, you know, the coverage of him using a city vehicle versus him using a, his private vehicle. And we probably know the answer to that. I, I think the problem lies in that we motioned as a city council and then all of a sudden it's taken away. Um, and we did talk about it, but I don't think we all agreed to it. We didn't vote on it. So if Dale wants to do it, our, our city employees are burdened enough. Um, I didn't, I didn't do it. I don't, I don't see what the big deal is.
Well, so I guess.
I think it, I think it's just the principle of it. I think that's the point I. I think it's just the principle of it. I think that's the point I'm trying to make, is the principle that you have an assignment, and then it's changed, and all of a sudden it's not working the way it used to.
So we can find out from our insurance whether you are covered. I don't know if city council members are covered to drive city vehicles. I don't know that I'm even covered to drive a city vehicle. You asked me earlier if I'd ever driven one, and I have not. If ever we go somewhere, I always make sure that I am riding with an employee, because I don't know that we are covered, but that certainly is something that we can find out. There's about six weeks left till the end of the year, and then in January, new assignments will come out. So I'm happy to do that and let you know as soon as we find out.
Well, I think my point is, is I know it seemed like a long discussion to explain what happened to make the point, but if there's assignments made, and then all of a sudden it's changed, then I think the person that has the assignment, the council member that has the assignment, should be part of that. They should understand what's happened.
Yeah.
The council members make the assignments.
Yes, they do. And I thought you understood that. I thought we had talked about it in the work meeting when you were here present. I thought you understood that, because we did talk about the liability and some of the concerns.
Of the truck. We didn't talk about the reporting and...
Sounds like it was a misunderstanding. Let's just figure out how to go forward.
Yeah, we'll find out on the insurance, and we can let you know on that. Like I say, we have about six weeks till January, then we can, then new assignments will, we can talk, you know, make a new vote and do it then. But we can let you know as soon. So that was actually a discussion and a motion. So is there a motion you wanted to make with this? Did you want a motion that we find out from our insurance? What motion did you want to make?
Well, that was on a different assignment here.
Well, what if you find out the insurance, and then make sure the reports go to Dale? Let Dale coordinate with the city and the sheriff on where the placement of the sign is. How would he do that in the sheriff's office to work where they place the sign? Do you have any input there, or do you care?
You were talking to your sergeant, saying we have a traffic unit.
Yeah, so work with the traffic unit and have a little group committee that make those decisions.
Yeah. And I would like to know, at the time, there was some concern about us not being covered by insurance at all. Was that cleared up? Are we covered when we're working and doing things, or?
I don't know. I don't have that answer, but we can certainly find out.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
I'm sure there's liability insurance, so when you're doing X on behalf of the city, if someone were to sue you for doing something wrong, you're going to be covered on that. That's not different than the automobile policy, though, so we ought to check the automobile policy, because automobile accidents would not be covered by the general insurance that the city has on the roof.
Yeah. Okay, but we can find that out. So again, was there a motion you wanted to make with this?
Well, no, not with that, other than, I don't know if that assignment's, well, I guess we're getting close enough to the end of the year to where, like you mentioned at the first of the year, there will be changes. But my concern, again, was the process that was taken to where you're given an assignment, and pretty soon it just is, you don't hear any more about it.
Yeah. Well, and again, we talked about that. So let's, we'll find out with the insurance. So again, that was action item, it said discussion and a motion. So was there a motion?
No, no, no. Okay, that was just discussion.
Okay.
Okay, the other one I had a concern about was, again, on the rental home that the city has. That, again, we had a discussion on that in a work meeting, that I would be the point of contact on that, but there was never a motion made on that or a second, that I was to be the point of contact. And then, as you're aware, I received a letter saying that I would no longer be the point of contact, that it would be you and Morgan here at the city. And so I wondered, again, there was some discussion with that, where if the rental company that's taking care of that, if they have several points of contact, it becomes confusing to them. They don't know what's going on. And that's what happened. So my question now is, this is one of the things, was I given an assignment, if there wasn't a motion and a second, to be the contact person for the rental home?
So I did, so I went through and did a little research on this, you know, since we've had some discussions on this. And so if we go back, and I don't know how far you even want to go back, but the home was actually purchased May 24th of 2022, so we've actually owned this home now for two and a half years. On March 7, 2024, I brought up as an agenda item to motion and have a discussion about possibly surpassing the home. And at that time, the motion was made that we should rent it. And so that was made back in March 7th of 2024. And that motion was made to hire a management company. On May 2nd, Dale, you presented three companies, and the motion was made at that time to select the property management company that was selected. There was never a motion made for you to be over the house or for you to be the contact person. In fact, when the contract was actually sent to Morgan, it actually had Morgan's name listed as the owner of the home. And so it took a little bit, it took a little time.
And I didn't send it. That was my point. There wasn't a motion with that during one of our, you know, our meetings, our discussions. It was...
We actually did agree to that.
We did? Oh, yes. I feel they, in order to...
You're right.
We didn't discuss that, and he was asked to be the point of contact person for the house.
So when the contract was actually made and signed, it actually says on the contract that Morgan is to be the point of contract, point of contact on the home. It actually says actually on the contract. And this came up because there was a little bit of confusion, which that's one of our items we need to talk about tonight, is about surpassing the furniture, because the city was not aware that anybody had moved into the home. And so when it came time, are we keeping the furniture or not? And we didn't have our meeting last time, so we'll get to that. But the point is, and we've talked about it, and it really needs to be under the, again, the umbrella of the city being the point of contact, because if someone calls and they need something, city council members will change, but the city will always be here. And the point of contact on the contract actually says it is Morgan. And so that's who needs to be the point of contact on the house. So if they have any questions, if there's things that need to be fixed, like we weren't aware that the water needed to be fixed, well, it's our staff that's going to have to go fix that. If there's furniture that needs to be moved, it's our staff that has to go. So that's why Morgan is going to be the point of contact.
Well, and I understand that, that people want to do that. But again, the discussion didn't follow what you just explained. I mean, we're hearing that now, but at our meeting, our staff meeting we had, or our meeting before, that was discussed that I would be the point of contact because I have worked with them.
Yeah. Well, I remember you were going to be the one that was going to go back to the management company and tell them. But anyway, we now have a contract, and so we have a rental, and so they'll be dealing with Morgan, because that's what the contract says. Okay, is there...
Yeah, just one more then. So the other, the one thing was on secondary water.
Uh huh.
So there was a meeting held at the Hooper Irrigation Company, and, you know, where I was assigned secondary water. I guess there was a question as water shares and where they're being used by the city. And since I'm over secondary water, I mean, I was never asked, where are all the water shares being used? There's those that are still being used for ag water and are leased to people, but there's a very few number of shares that's being leased to individuals for agriculture. The balance of that is for secondary water use. The balance of that is water shares that's used on the park by the rodeo grounds, it's used on this park. Most of it goes to the cemetery. And even though the cemetery is not pressurized system with secondary water, it still has a four-inch pipe that goes into the canal. They turn on a pump and water the cemetery with that water. So I think that, you know, if I'm over secondary water, I don't know why, I think Lisa, you were told by the mayor to go down and find out a little bit about this, and I was surprised why you never, if I'm over secondary water, I could have explained where most of those shares for the city are, you know, that's owned by the city, are being used, and where I think there's only like 10 shares that were being leased out to for agriculture. And there's still four shares, you know, four certificates that we haven't. I don't know if we've received them yet from the table property or this property next door that's with Wilson Irrigation. But that, again, that was my assignment, but yet it was overlooked, or, and so I wonder, again, why, I mean, these are all assignments that I had, that I think could have easily been resolved if we would have just talked about it, but that wasn't the case with any one of them.
So a little bit of clarification, as much as I can say right now. We actually had a complaint that was turned into the city concerning our irrigation waters. And so we were trying to gather information. It was an investigation that was going on that I was told I couldn't speak to anyone about, and so I did not. It is still something that we are working on. We are meeting next week on it. And so right at this time, I can't say anymore about that. After we do meet, I can let the council know, but currently it is something I cannot discuss.
Well, so was that, the complaint that came in this anonymous letter, where did that person get that information, if it didn't come from you or from the city?
Again, this is something that is an ongoing thing that can't be discussed, and so I can't say anymore about that at this time.
So is that why Lisa was sent down to the irrigation company instead of me?
Again, it's something that isn't active that we're discussing with the irrigation company, our attorneys, their attorneys. So it really isn't anything that I can discuss at this time. Okay, anything else on that then, on the council assignments? Okay. So is there a motion that was needed to be made with those council assignments? No? Okay, let's move on then. Okay, so the next thing we have on our agenda is a discussion and a motion at the purchase of Hooper City property. I think Malcolm has some things on that, and then we'll invite those that are here to talk about that. So not working Malcolm? I thought it was. We're trying a new cordless mic to prevent triage from cords going across. We're going to be in the process of getting some new microphones, and so again, bear with us. We're trying to move into the 20th century. We're not anywhere near the 21st. We're just trying to move into the 20th, so.
Hello, hello?
Okay, it's done.
All right, I don't have a lot to mention, just that we had a concept conference for the Zog property mentioned here. So we met with the development team and the owner of the property, and discussed the potential for development of this parcel you see here, this site plan. The consideration, though, you can see that home where the entrance of the road up from 5700 Southwood continue on, goes through Hooper City owned property. And so before we moved, and that's one of our vacuum lift stations, I believe, and so before we moved on with putting a lot of resources into building this out, and also before the developer moved on and put more resources into it, we wanted to, they would have to purchase some property to line that road up with the 5700 South. And so the developer and their team and the owner will kind of present what they're looking at, and you guys can ask questions from there.
Okay, thank you. Is there someone here that would like to come up and address that?
Yes, I can kick my way up here.
Will you just state your...
I'm getting old.
Just state your name.
I'm so old, I knew Ryan when he had hair. Ouch. And I did yell at him on a soccer field. Many years ago, Ryan, wasn't I? What we're looking at, part of the reason that we're looking...
Alan Kers.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alan Kers. I assume everybody knows. I'm always usually in trouble. So we kind of talked about this property, and when we talked to the state, because as you well know, 5900 West is a state road, and so they have purview of entrance onto that. They referred the 5700 South lineup on that. Any development that's going to take place east of 5900, there's not a real lot of places that come in that line up with roads. This is one of them. The city owns the lift station there. We went with staff out and kind of measured it out, how to look at. And we're really, the concept, I think we maybe even changed it a little bit from this, but the main part was, is we needed to be able to buy a little sliver of ground from the city to run that street there. If we can't do that, then we have to look at other options. And so we're here to say, the proposal would be is, we'd have, figure out exactly what that piece of ground is we need there, have it appraised, and you pick the appraisal. Have me pick the appraisal, we'll pull one out of the form book, whatever you want to do, and we paid the city the amount that the appraisal is. So based off the square footage or whatever, so that we can align that with 5700. Brent wants to take, and probably, he's trying to save that one building that the road goes right, one of the roads go through. We may modify that just a little bit. The one, can I walk up to that? Is that right?
Sure.
This one's going to probably have to go to Madhu. It's this one over here, so we may bring this in and then go there, but it would be on our property or Brent's property. So we're not looking for approval of the design, just some kind of a discussion with the city to say, will you sell us some ground so we can deed it back to you in the road? And I think that would be, not asking you to donate it, we'd buy it from you, just like we could buy Brent's property and dedicate the roads to the city, improve them, obviously, along with that.
So will the part that you're buying going, it'll turn in when you develop into a road?
That's correct.
And then you'll dedicate it back to the city?
Yes, that's correct.
So really, you're needing it for your development, but ultimately, it's going to be owned by the city?
Yeah, ultimately, to give back to the city. That's correct. But the difference would be the use would change. Instead of having just a side yard to your lift station there, it would become a city road. So based off of a change in use, I'm willing to pay the fair market value for it, if that's agreeable with the city.
I presume the sewer people have no problem with that.
We went over, as we discussed this after one of our meetings, and we had Darren Port and Jared. We went over and looked to see if, make sure there was nothing that was going to be in the way. And they saw a little bit of a positive, because then they'd have a better access to the back portion of the, I'm gonna walk over again. This is to give them a better access to this portion of the property with a dedicated paved road there. So obviously, we would have to come in to that lift station somewhere in that same area. We'd have to just work those things out.
So would there still be a sufficient set back?
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
If you don't speak in the mic, no one can hear you online, so. But yeah, you know, in a preliminary state, it worked, and then the only other consideration was if there were some, from the city standpoint, as you can see, our access is currently there on the south of the building.
Correct.
UDOT asked that if they did do this, they'd want us to share the same access to the north one, that wouldn't work likely, but I let UDOT know that, and they're aware that we could keep our same access, so we would need to keep the same access on the south, because coming in on their access is upgraded from the north, I don't know the details, but something to do with the crane, I don't know, lift stations.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and I also note too, I think Alan from talking with them, if there was anything that needed to be moved, and I don't know if there was utilities or anything on that north side that you would pay those expenses to move if we do, and I don't know that we do have anything, but if there was anything that needed to be...
Obviously, we want on our side also, well, like I said, the main reason is, is if we can get an approval, then we can move to page two, which would be do at more in-depth rather than stand there on the property, look at it, and say, you know, get all the drawings out, spend some money on engineers and stuff to get that done, but I just didn't want to spend all that money and have it come back and say, at least at this point, in preliminary, without you even being willing to entertain the idea of selling that little strip of ground.
So, once the road is built, if it's what you're talking about, is there a sufficient setback between the road and the building that's there now, the city building?
The city building, I don't know what, I don't know, is that considered a residential setback? I don't know what setback is required, I didn't look at that. I think there's, you remember how many feet it was from the building? You remember, can you measure it later? That's been a while. I don't think it was thirty feet, but I think it was somewhere in the vicinity of twenty feet from where the road would be. Of course, you'd have, that's not from, depends on what you call the road, because you have an easement, which is sixty foot wide, in which the road, you've got park strip, sidewalk, and all of that, so that it would not be right up against the building that way, but we'd have to...
Looks like a side property line on a local street for structures twenty foot.
So, we'd need to look and see if we can make the twenty foot, we may have to jog.
We wouldn't want to violate our law, I guess is what I'm guessing.
Well, we've done it before though. I've been coming here for the city a long time, so sometimes we do it out of necessity. But if you look at, too bad we don't have a larger picture of the east of fifty-nine hundred, there's not a real lot of other places that line up, there are some, but they're down further south that line up to make your street patterns work. You have subdivisions that have come and stubbed to the west-east of us, the, I can't finish the subdivision, I can't remember the name, Hooper, Brad Beus did it. Anyhow, it's kind of the next property over. In fact, you can see the houses on the map.
Morning Meadows?
No, it's not Morning Meadows, something over.
It's fifty-seven twenty-five South is where it is.
Yeah, fifty-seven twenty-five, oh yeah, the postman, he'll know. And so, that road comes down, and if you look at a traffic pattern through that area, it would be nice to have the grid that works. So, I think it benefits the city in the long run also.
So, one other question?
Sure.
Doesn't sound like you've done some of the work, and so you've got a little more to do. So, would it be a problem to wait until our next meeting to get a determination? The problem is to sell city property, we should give a two-week notice, a fourteen-day notice, and allow public comment.
Okay, and that would be good. We just wanted to see if there was a, you know, if it's a, if it's a hard no, nobody on the council says no, then we're off looking at other options. But if it's a yes, we would consider it, give us more information, I'd be glad to gather the more information. And do a property.
I think where it lines up with fifty-seven hundred South, we make an intersection there without having to have another turnoff of UDOT, which they probably wouldn't want you to do anyway.
No.
I think that's a real positive thing.
I thought it was too, so I was hoping that the city council would see it the same way.
I have questions about like the end, like so-called these little stubs in the dead end, is that gonna connect up with like the other subdivisions earlier that have a home there?
No, it doesn't come close to those. Those would be future developments that would have to come into you. I've reached out to the people to the east of that to see if they were interested in selling, I got no response from them. But they probably get tons of people asking, doesn't everybody here get cards every day wanting to sell, want to sell your property?
So, what is then the purpose of those short two little stubs that's going west and south?
I think it's in your city code.
The city requires, so if ever there is a development, they have to have a greater willingness to have a couple of those.
Yeah, that's in your, that's in your city code. You have a code, the street can only go so far before it has, and you can't landlock your neighbors.
Yeah, you couldn't landlock them, I just didn't know, they were both ways k, yeah.
So, you did float the idea of having fifty-six fifty, just going straight in on fifty-nine hundred west, when you not said no?
Say that again, Mike.
So, instead of going fifty-seven hundred South and curve it over, did you float the idea of having fifty-six fifty South, going straight in on fifty-nine hundred west?
UDOT has a six-hundred-and-sixty foot requirement between roads, um, between states.
State does not, they, well, you guys just know the state, right? The nine-hundred found the gorilla, and they said, if you want to get approved...
You gotta let a road anywhere that's not six-hundred-and-sixty feet from this road.
That's correct.
That's the requirement.
So, how far would fifty-six fifty South be? Right in the middle of that?
So, one block is six-hundred-and-sixty feet, and I think that's why UDOT has that requirement of six-hundred-and-sixty. And Hooper City's code, ours actually says eight-hundred feet. So, even if UDOT would let them, it doesn't meet our code as far as where an intersection of a road would be.
Yes, we, I thought we were short. Because that's, I think originally that's what we had thought we would do.
That makes more sense.
Yeah, that, for us, put the road right in the middle is the most, you know, we're not doing crazy stuff with lots, you know? If you go put the lot one back up, you can see we've got some very even with this, we've got, without modifying, we've got some pretty interesting shapes of some lots there with it. That block eighteen is kind of a, somebody's gonna need a light frontage there.
There might be something Hooper might want to look at sometime, having ours being in agreement with UDOT's. We don't really know where our eight-hundred came up with, but six-hundred-and-sixty is a block, so I think that's why UDOT is...
I'm just thinking across the street here on forty-six hundred, you've got a fifty-six hundred and a fifty-six seventy-five, you know, is that even...
Again, understand some of this was, some of these streets were laid out long, 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 long.
That's what it was just used for.
Yeah, so you have almost, so, a block then of six-hundred-and-sixty, it would be thirteen-hundred-and-twenty would be a block, and if that's three-quarters of thirteen-hundred-and-twenty, who has a calculator? Is that eight-hundred feet?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. So, I think that's why, but I think ours, I don't see, sometime we might want to look at changing ours in agreement with UDOT's of six-sixty. And you can kind of understand, I didn't really think it made a difference, but now the West Davis corridor is done, and I don't know how many of you have been to the end of fifty-five hundred, it drops into where forty-five hundred is Davis County, and you're waiting there on that where Pitts Corner is, and you're trying to get across there now, and there's that other little road, it's difficult and it's not safe.
That's terrible.
I understand, I understand better now the reasoning of why we have that, so.
You gotta have people time to, yeah, make the change. So, so, what I'm gonna entertain is kind of an unofficial nod to go spend some more money and then come back with an official proposal to the city council. What do I need to do, read to make it?
Well, I think if you want it within two weeks, we need to notice it right away. If you're not in any particular hurry, we'll...
Well, I think we'd like to get noticed up, yeah, so, so we just come in tomorrow and do whatever we need to provide money?
So, Morgan, who does our noticing, will not be back until Tuesday, so we would not be able to get it to...
But you can do it in the first meeting in December.
The first meeting in December?
Yes.
So, we'll get in and make that official application if, can I just, is, I don't know if it's kosher proper to ask, has anybody got a real negative feeling for it, so before I go spend money?
Any comments on concerns before he does the meeting?
Number one is just what Reed brought up, is, you know, what's done in the past. Probably why you're always in trouble, huh?
That's right. I've also known Reed a very long time, so that's part of it too.
That is trouble.
Well, we can get it noticed, and like Reed made them, you know, you will buy it from us and they give it back to us, so.
Yeah, the rule is, you can actually avoid the notice if you make a determination by ordinance that it's not a significant piece of property, which it may not be, because we can get it back. But if you're not, if the first of December is safe, then it's just...
I was trying to be fair with the city and tried to, I didn't want to come in and just say, hey, give me part of your grounds, so I can put a road in. I was just trying to be, what I felt like was honest and fair with the city. I've developed in the city for many years, and I think I have a reputation of doing it properly, so I was just trying to do it properly and not try to ask for something beyond. So, I thought it was fair to ask, say, let me buy it, if we want to do something, if you obviously can do it by ordinance, then I would, that would be fine with me too, because the city will benefit by it, and I think they'll benefit in the long run with what stuff to the east of there gets developed someday.
Easiest way is just notice that, put it on the next meeting.
We will, then we'll notice it, then plan, it's December fifth will be when our next city council meeting is, and so we will have it on the agenda, and when Morgan gets back on Tuesday, we will have her get that notice.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for...
Do I need officially come in and do something? I guess that's the clarification I'd like.
Need to make sure she has the description of the property so that it goes in the notice.
Okay, because we'll need to create that, okay. Can we...
And it doesn't have to be Tuesday, as long as we're fourteen days before the next meeting.
Okay, fourteen days before the next meeting?
Yeah.
So, in looking at it, I wanted to have a little bit of fudge room at that point. Yeah, at right there, not knowing exactly how we've got to turn, and I may need a little little, so if I...
Maybe just give the intersection there, and it'd be the, what, the north, northeast corner?
Well, yeah, the very northeast corner, yeah, the very northeast corner.
Give approximate amount of property.
Approximate amount, and maybe we could have it, the price based off of the square footage that we end up needing when we do the engineering, is that, is that something that can be a little bit flexible or not?
Yeah, I think also if there's fences that have to be moved, that the city, you know, has around that facility, or any expense that the city would have, we...
Sure, yeah.
Malcolm, you could probably come up with those figures. I guess you're just here to find out, is this...
Is it feasible?
Yeah, is it even feasible, or how would the council feel about it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anybody didn't express any extreme negatives, so, okay, we'll get that notice. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Okay, so, that will also limit, it's just a discussion, there won't be a motion. Okay, C on our agenda or action items then, is a discussion with a possible motion of changing speed limit sign, or the speed limit on our collector roads. So, currently in Hooper, and just a little bit of background, so the collector roads are ones that are more of our main roads that go through, so you have like fifty-five, well, we can start clear going from the west, but the ones that we're talking about tonight is fifty-five hundred west, fifty-one hundred west, forty-seven hundred west. All of the other roads in Hooper are already, the collector roads thirty miles an hour. So, any of the roads now that are running east and west, so not counting our state roads, which are four thousand south, fifty-nine hundred west, and fifty-five hundred south from the fifty-nine hundred west, the school corner to the east are all state roads. All of our, in Hooper then, all of our east and west collector roads are all thirty, all of our north and south collector roads are all thirty miles an hour, with the exceptions of fifty-five hundred, fifty-one hundred, and forty-seven hundred. And this first came out because there is a new school, everybody's from Echo West Haven Bay that is bailed on the corner of thirty-three hundred south and fifty-one hundred west. So, we had a discussion with West Haven City, the sheriff's department was there, Weaver County's also involved, because on fifty-one hundred west, we have multiple speed signs limits. So, we have thirty-five miles an hour that was north of, in the unincorporated part, that's Weaver County, and then it went forty, and so they were asking that as if we could change it to thirty. West Haven is agreeable to change it to thirty, Clare to forty-eight twenty-five. On fifty-one hundred, I'm probably losing everyone, because the east side is West Haven, and then the west side is Hooper. And so, then we thought that we might as well just change all of it to thirty, because if not, it's going to be forty and then thirty. And then fifty-five hundred is the other road that's forty miles an hour, and then we talked about forty-seven hundred, which is currently twenty-five, but then it goes from twenty-five to thirty-five, so West Haven talked about changing that to thirty as well. And maybe you can even get some input Lieutenant Legley, we thought it might just be more consistent rather than constantly changing speeds on one road.
What makes it easier to bend the corner when the entire road's thirty miles per hour, something gets pulled over, and they just came out of forty-five and dropped into thirty-five, and then the intersection's gonna be forty, that makes it easier for them to argue for it, they didn't feel like they were in a thirty-five and a forty-five.
And during the construction on fifty-five, it's been set at thirty, there are thirty mile an hour speed limit signs, they were just south of four thousand, there's thirty mile, so from Sinclair to the south is thirty, so we just have this pocket in between that's forty. And so, on the discussion tonight is changing the speed limit signs on our collector roads to thirty miles an hour, and only three that are not that already is those three roads. So, discussion from the council?
I think it makes sense on forty-seven hundred for sure.
Forty-seven hundred's one of our nicer improved roads, and currently it's twenty-five, and so, that is going up a little bit for residents, but not that much, but then it will be a bit more consistent if West Haven changes their, theirs to thirty. Fifty-one hundred, it would be changed preferably because of the school zone, which West Haven wants to do that, and they own half the road, and then further south, so.
So, West Haven's already made this change, where there's still, this is going before their council as well?
It went over, through their council last night, and yeah, they've already approved to change it to thirty.
The council approved it?
Their council already approved to change it to thirty.
The council also ordered to help their side of thirty, so it would be very helpful.
Yeah, Weaver County's already changed the signs, and West Haven's already ordered the signs to change it to thirty. And the only other road is fifty-five, and like we've said that if we get forty during, and it's only part of it, that's forty, I just thought it would be easier if residents just know all the collector roads in Hooper are thirty, you know, then there's not a question of, is it forty, is it thirty? Oh, no, now I'm in Davis County, it's thirty, now I'm back in Weaver, you know, I just thought it just made it seem like it would be easier and more safe as well. Any comments?
I get my opinion in the planning portions, so.
You can give it, you can...
You can give us your opinion.
You can give it.
I just, sometimes lowering speed limits doesn't improve efficiency and safety. Maybe it does, but I think so, five, fifty-five miles an hour is a perfect example of that, but, I don't know, I'd sure like to go thirty-five on those on fifty-one and fifty-five, because like I told Ryan, I drove thirty miles an hour, and I think what's gonna happen is you're gonna have a lot of impatient people. But there again, you want consistency, you know, I totally get that, maybe there's just to be a learning curve, but I don't know, but I'm not a fan of thirty miles an hour on those two long roads, but that's just my opinion.
I, oh, sorry.
And I doubt Deborah's gonna disagree, because she lives on fifty-one. That's okay.
No, I agree that they should be lowered, but I think fifty-one should be lowered the whole entire road.
But I'm, I'm not a fan of thirty miles an hour on those two long roads, but that's just my.
I, oh, sorry.
And I hope Deborah's going to disagree because she lives on fifty-one. That's okay.
No, I, I, I agree that they should be lowered and, but I, I think fifty-one should be lowered the whole entire road.
Well, and then again, we have the same problem on fifty-five, because we have thirty, thirty, and then forty, so that makes it hard too, and then again on, on forty-seven hundred, so.
Having pockets of speeds, you know, one, you know, forty and then thirty, and I, I just think it creates a problem for drivers, you know. It, I mean, I, I myself have had that problem driving somewhere. I, at one point I look and it's thirty, and then, and then, yeah, I see another sign later on that says forty, or the other way around, and I found myself speeding because of the fact that it's changed and I haven't noticed, and I just think consistency on the road is, is a good thing for people.
So I think fifty-one hundred is the most complex issue we have, because it's partially owned by West Haven. So if West Haven has changed it, Weaver County's changed it, and I also think we have to come in line with our other two entities to make that the same, right, to make it consistent. Where we have a little bit more flexibility is fifty-five there at last, because we're sole ownership of fifty-five hundred until it gets to Davis County, so. I mean, like, like Bryce, I understand the consistency thing. But, but thirty miles an hour, it's staying slow with fifty-five hundred west. I've tried it, that's, it's difficult.
Maybe, maybe we do want it to be slow though, because again, like I say, it's thirty, clear to Sinclair, so.
Well, even Davis County.
Well, even on Weaver County's side.
Well, just until you get to fifty-five south. Fifty-five south all the way to four thousand, it's forty miles an hour.
Yeah, but I don't under, I don't know why it was ever faster along there than the, than any of the other roads.
Before we remember the city, it was forty miles an hour.
It was forty all the way across, so.
Forty years ago, it was forty miles an hour.
So if we leave yet forty though, it's going to be the only forty mile an hour collector road in Hooper. And that's only half of our road that's that, which doesn't make a lot of sense to me. What about forty-seven hundred? Thoughts on forty-seven hundred, changing it from twenty-five to thirty?
Definitely. That needs to be consistent through West Haven and for thirty miles an hour, for sure.
So again, if we change forty-seven hundred and fifty-one, then we, I feel like we should change fifty-five. Then there would be no reason just to have one road in Hooper for, from fifty-five to four thousand, that's only a two mile stretch, that's forty.
I can almost guarantee that nine out of ten cars will not go thirty miles an hour on fifty-five hundred west, and fifty-one.
Well, then, like I say, I'm ideal learning, and, you know, we talked about this in our meeting too, we may just have to recruit our sheriffs to sit there for a little bit and get people used to the speed limit and.
And that being said, I hate to punish Hooper city residents for something that's been in place their entire lifetime, you know, that, that's where I'm having a hard time with that. Is, we're arbitrarily punishing the residents with the threat of, of enforcement on a road they've gone that, that speed forever. And so that's where I'm struggling a little bit. I understand the consistency. I, I wish we had a little bit of, uh, community input on this issue, because it'd be fun to hear what people would say or, you know, how it feels like.
We, we got used to fifty-five hundred, remember, it'd be fifty miles an hour all, all the way, and then it decreased to forty.
I don't ever feel like it's a punishment for people to slow down.
So we're ready to do this, it's, it's.
Well, and maybe to begin with, there could maybe even be some warnings and we, I. We, we still live out here at fifty-five, on parts of the road still have jointages on the side, so we don't have overly wide roads that I.
How come? I mean, this is just for West Haven City, actually should be, that's on forty-seven hundred up to the Maverick and Fire Station, I think that's forty. And then they changed it to thirty as soon as they crossed that line. So, I mean, they're not all that consistent either.
Any other comments from the council?
Yeah, so there was a little discussion here, um, so what if we changed fifty-one hundred, um, to the thirty, close to thirty? Fifty-five, let's table it and, and get some community input and, uh.
Forty-seven, change it to thirty.
And forty-seven, change it to thirty, yeah. So change those two that we share boundaries with, and then let's leave fifty-five for another discussion.
And, and how do you suggest getting community input?
Probably set this if you.
Have a public hearing?
Yeah, true next to me.
Okay, yeah, we could do a public hearing and have people come and give their comments, because again, then, like, what you're saying, it will change the other two to thirty. We, and it'll only be now from, because what is it north of four thousand on fifty-five hundred?
Center construction.
Yeah, I believe, I believe it's thirty as well. It's thirty. So we will only have one two mile section of Hooper that's forty in all of Hooper.
We'll get some input from citizens.
I mean, even tonight, you're not going to Congress.
So they're widening it, aren't they, already at forty?
I hope not.
No, they will, it'll be thirty. Well?
Be interesting to see what those folks that live on the street that's twenty-five say about the increase too.
Well, it'll be thirty, it'll be going from twenty-five to thirty.
Okay, I'd like that, Bryce.
I do too.
I'll come up with fifty-one hundred.
So I'll make, let's see if I can get this right. I'll make a motion that we, um, approve the speed limit change on the collector roads of fifty-one hundred west and forty-seven hundred west to thirty miles an hour. And on fifty-five hundred west, we table that for a future discussion and public input.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, there was a motion made by council member Will Cox, the second was made by council member Hill. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, my discussion would be those citizens on forty-seven hundred going up from twenty-five miles an hour to thirty miles an hour, just because they're the ones that always request this attractor. And, and they're, they're going faster there. Do they want it to be faster there, or I would think they should be able to have some input on forty-seven hundred.
So we share.
That, as we go.
As we do, as we go north, it's, it's.
They've got the nicest road.
And, and we're shared with West Haven, which we try to be consistent.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point, too.
So any other discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. So we will notice this and have our next city council meeting a public hearing on lowering the speed on fifty-five hundred west from fifty-five hundred south to four thousand south. Okay, okay, and so the next part of it, our one is then, a motion and a discussion. And we have an interlocal agreement, which is also G, they ended up getting split into two things, but we can do it over the same one, because it is the same one. So on fifty-one hundred west, the request was made that we have an official school crossing, and that would be at thirty-five seventy-five south. So right now there is a school crossing with a crossing guard, but we do not have official school crossing lights, so we would have lights there, and then on the corner at thirty-three hundred south and fifty-one hundred west, we would have a pedestrian crossing going from the west to the east, and then also from the south to the north or vice versa. And these official pedestrian crossings would be when you just push the button and then it would flash, similar to the one on fifty-nine hundred with our walking trail. So that, and we have an interlocal agreement that we would be entering in with this with West Haven City, where we would be sharing the costs. One little note with this is most of these students, all, all of the students from thirty-five seventy-five are Hooper students, residents. All of the students crossing on thirty-three hundred from the west are also Hooper residents. And West Haven has agreed to share the cost of these. So, um, motion, or, excuse me, discussion from the council?
I think for good, uh, good many, if I have, good safety precaution, absolutely.
I think we figured out the cost would be, and I can't find my paper.
It's about twelve thousand five hundred for your share.
Twelve thousand five hundred would be our share that the city would be, and again, this is something that West Haven approved at their city council meeting last night, and I, I feel like they are being really good to share the cost with us since this is mainly benefiting Hooper residents. Just one little announcement too, our crossing guard at that place is, has given our notice, and we only have it a week from Friday, so. Out there, if anybody knows of anybody that would be interested, you know, by a West Haven City, we're actively advertising to try to get a new crossing guard for those students. So, okay, any discussion on this then, or does someone want to make a motion?
So we're just motioning, uh, the two together, is that what you said?
Yes, I, I think so, since they are, really the interlocal agreement includes all of those same things, so.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve the First Amendment to the interlocal cooperation amendment to West Haven and Hooper City, um, including the payment of the school crossing zone, um, thirty-five seventy-five south and thirty-two hundred south, I'm thinking on that list.
Okay, the motion was made by council member Hill. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second was made by council member Northrup. All in favor?
Aye.
By? Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, the next thing we have on our agenda is to talk about grants. And you probably noticed, city council, I'm going to try to always do a report if we send out ahead of time, so you'll kind of know what this is, so. And we were really fortunate, I feel like, that the rent grant passed. There was just that, that came before the taxes, and so I, you know, a little bit of background on the, um, rent grants, it is like one cent out of every ten dollars that they take from the sales tax. Municipalities and other agencies can apply for grants, there are different categories, there is a major grant. And, uh, these grants are for parks and recreation and arts and museum. And so you can apply for one major grant, which is over two hundred thousand, three that fit in the parks and recreation grants, which are less than two hundred thousand, and three that are in the arts and museums, which are also less than two hundred thousand, and then, and those are due in January. And then there's three that are easy grants for two thousand, and those are due in March. And so, uh, we need to come up as a council, if we want to apply for any grants this year, what you would like to apply for grants. I gave some suggestions that have been discussed by staff of some possible things that they have thought of that we could possibly apply for. And, and always, you know, at the bottom, I also did another option, you know, if you want to come up with other ideas, probably the sooner the better. And if anybody wants to help, I know, and I, Debbie, I know has offered to help before in the writing of these grants. City staff have offered to help in writing these grants, so it's just a matter of who you want to. And, and you'll see, and the packet did come out, so maybe I'll just quickly tell you some thoughts we had for the arts and museums. Was writing for the Hooper Tomato Days concert. This year is going to be our hundredth year anniversary, and so then we could write a grant for the concert, we can write a grant for the rodeo, and so that would be something, the Arts Council. So we now have a newly formed volunteer arts council that could help if we wanted to do, for instance, like a, any kind of cultural event, perhaps maybe for veterans or any thing that wanted with the arts council. Parks and recs, we talked about doing, getting some grass, some sprinkler system, done some landscaping around the pickleball courts. The Public Works has also mentioned about possibly doing some more parking, where there's just some little kind of pocket parks that are more to the south side, maybe putting some laptop rooms, some roto mill in there for parking. And possibly new restrooms, well, at the Wildwood Park, it currently doesn't have any restrooms, that could be one. Also a power upgrade down at Hooper Park, we're doing really well of getting a power upgrade, but still along the fence line behind where the rodeo bleachers are, none of those work along there, and for Hooper Tomato Days, we use those. Another thing that was mentioned too, after I had sent this out to you, was possibly getting some more portable bleachers down for the rodeo arena. The bleachers on the, the south side of the park are quite old, the woods kind of rickety, and Jared mentioned, we could take out those wooden bleachers, and they could easily, and maybe put some roto mill here or some asphalt down there, and put in some portable bleachers that would actually give more seating. So that could be something that we could, um, write these for, so I guess the first thing is, so you're interested in applying for your rent grants this year, so do you have any ideas on what you would like to write those for?
Yeah, I, okay, so it says on major grants, it's been suggested that we not apply for major grant this year.
That was, that was just talking with city staff when we were going through things, it would have to be something that would be over two hundred thousand, and if you can think of something.
I think what I would, I think what would be great is, um, phase two by the pickleball courts, which is a dump station and finish the landscaping. I'm not sure the scope of that, but if it's not enough, include, because we used to rent this facility to people who've had, you know, family parties and stuff like that, and I've had a lot of people disappointed that they can't do that now. I would like to see that, uh, the main building over at KS, the old KSOS, do some renovations there and have that as like a community. A place where they can rent it out for homecomings or whatever they want to do, family reunions, um, and utilize that, you know, space. I would, I would like to explore that. I have no experience in buying rent grants, I know Deborah does, you do, obviously.
I thought the same thing about KSOS too.
I think that would be a great, uh, addition to our city, and I'd soon, apply for it sooner than later.
Well, and, uh, renovation of that would easily be to that.
I'm sure would, yeah.
Plus, you know, so that, that could be easily a major rent grant request.
So the city has to come up with half, so that would, that would be obligating the city to the hundred thousand.
And from what I understand, the property acts as an incantation.
It does. The property can be act, um, as an incantation, it's what that assesses on the, on the tax notice. But you, but we would only want to make sure to use that piece, because we wouldn't want to have to ob, oblige any, because we might want to use it some other time.
What about building itself, the value of the building itself, where it's just a renovation, it's not, would, would that value, would that value count towards?
It could. I, Reid, your best.
Well, it would depend, if, if you use it for biddies, city operations other than parks and recreation, no. But if it's used exclusively for that purpose, then probably so. And you could maybe put restrooms in there that were public restrooms, and that would, access can be usable by any of the people in the park. So as long as you meet those requirements, that it, it's going for, uh, parks and recreation, you should be fine.
I know that building needs a new roof. It has never been hooked into sewer, there are bathrooms in there. It's, so there would be, but that would be something, if you were interested in that, we could look into it and see. I, I have no idea, I don't, but I thought the same thing, Bryce. I went in there and it does have that big room in there. We would have to wall off the west end, because it has, you know, that, it's a big electrical panel type thing that they use for the tower. So we would have to wall that off, but even with that, then it really does have, it's a big space in there, and it does have a small kitchen. It just has like a burner, it's really doesn't have a stove. I don't remember, oh, six left, she used to work there. But, um, I don't, I don't, I didn't see a refrigerator, but that doesn't mean that one couldn't be put in it, and it does have several offices too, which we talked with Public Works about that possibly also being a Public Works building sometime, because they could have their offices there. Maybe put some big doors in the front to store, you know, some of the Public Works equipment as well, but we could.
Part of it, yeah. There are a lot of possibilities.
A portion would use for the big, for the big room.
For the recs.
To create a, to create a recreational facility.
Yeah. Yeah.
And while, while we're doing that, we could even think about using some of the city money to renovate the offices, fortunately. Uh, it's worth a shot, I mean, we want to.
Yeah.
So, who would, right, I mean, I can't, I, I just don't have experience, so Deborah, do you have experience to do that? Can you hear me? Can you hear me, Deborah?
Yeah, I had done mute myself, um, anyway, um, I haven't had any experience on anything that big. I mean, if someone was to help me, I'd be happy to work on, on that.
So, I know, uh, Tracy used to write as well, right? But she's not one, one of the sort of staff.
Yeah, I, I think we could come up with that. So, in order to do that, we may have to spend some money to get maybe some kind of architectural something to figure that out. Are we okay with spending city funds to try to get a bid? I mean, we may have to get some kind of architectural design, maybe of how that would be, I, I don't know, because I don't really, I know for sure it needs a new roof. I know that, and I know it needs to hook into sewer, and there always can be some in-kind expenses. So, I, I, I like that idea, I mean, I, I went in it, because we were looking for something for Hooper Tomato Days, and, um, I said the same thing. I think we have just city kids that would end up using it for indoor soccer, because there's only one place that they really go to practice, and it's clear over in North Auton. The roof, if you've been inside the ceiling, it has that drop down, all those pipe grid type things, but I think.
Is it big enough for indoor soccer, that would be a real?
It, it, for practice, it wouldn't be for games, but it would be, it's, it's pretty good sized in there, yeah.
Yeah. So, we could, um, yeah, if some, if somebody would help me and work with me, I'd, uh, I'd be willing to work on it.
So, so would you like to, I, I think, I don't think we could do, we, I don't think we could lump all of that into one major. I think we would either have to say renovation of the KSOS for a major, or Bryce, if you wanted to look at like the dump and the, I don't, I don't think the landscaping and the sprinkling system would be enough for a major. So, do you want to look at possibly the renovation of KSOS for the major? Okay? Okay, and then?
So, I mean, I'll try and, I'll look to you, I do like the idea of, um, since it's our centennial tomato days.
Yeah.
I do like the idea of getting a grant to, to bump up our concert, above and beyond what we possibly can, you know, I mean, we could get a big name, that'd be awesome for another year, you know?
I think so too.
So, I, I say spend, or do the rent grant for the first one, for the concert. And then, I do like the idea of applying for money for landscaping for the parks and recs.
Yeah.
What about, do you want to, because like I say, we can do three, do you want to do it for it's our rodeo? We, we, we don't break even on our rodeo, and you can write a grant, um, and get money to do the rodeo, which would help with those costs, and it does fit under arts. So, I, I don't think it hurts to write them and see.
Yeah, we could, we could do the three of them.
And then, what, so if we do the pickleball, what about the parks and recs? So, let me probably go on to that, so are you okay to think, like, the arts council could be a smaller one, but we could come up with, if there is, like I say, we have this newly formed arts council committee, if they have any ideas. And then, the parks.
We could even, we could even do an easy grant for the arts council, if we use the larger ones for the other three.
Well, we can do three, Debbie, with the arts and museums, so there would be the concert, the rodeo, and we could do one more under arts and museums if we want to.
Oh, I see, okay.
And then the parks, oh, oh, go ahead, sorry, Debbie, what?
I, I just said, I just said, okay, and then I made a cough a little, sorry about that.
So, then the parks and recs then, we do the pickleball, um, what do you think about, I, I think, I would for sure, I think, like to see the power upgrade. Um, and then I kind of go back and forth, it would be nice to get restrooms at the Wildwood Park, but it would also be nice to have some new portable bleachers for the rodeo grounds, and, you know, kind of boost this, since this is our celebration, so.
Yeah. So, I mean, we can, we can do as many as we can, you know, I mean, that's, that's the only, that's the only, uh, thing that would stop us is not being able to get them done. So, I mean, I think they're all great ideas, it would just be getting them finished and completed.
Sure.
I think the basis of our request for all of these will be our hundred year celebration.
I do too.
And we're upgrading our, we're upgrading this, we're doing this for a hundred year celebration, I think that's a big celebrate myself.
Yeah, I, I agree, I, I don't know of any other, I, I think we're one of the only, I'll put, phrase it that way, cities in the state of Utah that is celebrating a hundred years of, like, consistently running. Someone said, oh, what about COVID, yeah, but we still had fireworks that year, and we still did, you know, some things with that, it was just a little bit different. So, so would you sooner than, do you think, instead of the Wildwood Park restrooms, maybe look at getting some more bleachers for the arena? How do you guys feel about that, okay? Okay.
I don't think the Wildwood Park's.
I think so, the Wildwood Park is within walking distance, and most of the people that go there. Yeah, well, you know, and I, I think sometime it would be a good idea to have restrooms, I, it's quite hard if you're a mother taking children to a park, but there's not restrooms. So, okay, so power upgrade to the park, I think you're right, though we could kind of have these all around, but this is our hundredth year, and the, doing the landscaping, and then the bleachers, and then, and there might even be, along with the arts council, there might even be some other little type thing that we do along with our hundred celebration that goes along with that, so. Okay, so, any other discussion on these? So, would someone like to then make a motion that we apply for these grants?
Um, I'll make a motion that we apply for the, the grant, and any others that we've come upon.
Part of that motion, could I just have you list them again?
Sure. Okay, so, so the major grant was KSOS renovation, to look at that. And again, we'll have to look and see costs, I, I have no idea on that. Um, and then on the arts and museums was for our centennial concert, the rodeo, and for the arts council. And then the parks and recs would be pickleball, landscaping.
So, our arts council, what, what does that involve?
What, well, so, so we, I, I don't, I don't know yet, we have a newly formed volunteer arts council, but maybe we could do some kind of hundred year program or something for our celebration. And if we can't come up with anything, we don't, we don't have to, but, um.
All right.
And then, and then the parks and recs would be the pickleball, landscaping, um, some new portable bleachers down for the rodeo grounds, and more power upgrade down at Hooper Park.
Well, second motion.
Okay, so the motion was made by council member Marigoni, it was seconded by council member Hill, any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so, um, the next thing we have to talk about is surplus of furniture for the rental home. And so, um, just a little bit of background of this, when this home was purchased, it was purchased fully furnace, fully furnished. Um, and then I had received, Morgan and I did together, a text message from Scott Larson, who is our property, the management one.
Revolution, yeah.
I don't know exactly what his title is there, but he, when he sent the message, he first said, okay, I have someone who's looking at the home, they might be interested in keeping the furniture there, they might also be not wanting the furniture, wanting it moved. But then he, and I put this in this memo that I sent to you, that he said, um, I do want to make sure we are clear that there is no value to the personal property, and that we don't hold him, the tenant, responsible for damage. Also, we don't expect him to leave it, the furniture, when he moves. So, so that was when I put this on the agenda, the possibility of surplusing the furniture. So, we, so we'd be on top of it, because I hadn't heard that, all I had heard was, um, I have someone who's looking, possibly interested. And then I didn't hear anything back from him until I was notified that, well, we were notified because it came to, we needed to hook up the water, anyway. So, then when I spoke with him, he said, no, they don't want the furniture, we have moved it, some of it's in the garage, some of it's out back, can you move it today? And I said, no, that wasn't possible for our staff, and he said, okay, tomorrow, and this was like a Thursday afternoon, I said, our employees don't work. And I said, and we have to get it approved, I said, I can't just surplus this without getting it approved by city council. And so, then I told him when the meeting was, and he said, okay, if you vote on it tonight, can we move it tomorrow? And I said, no, because they don't work tomorrow, and Monday's a holiday. And so, and it's not like our staff have nothing better to do than be furniture movers, and where will we move the furniture to? So, again, I did the mayor's report, that we need to decide what we want to do with it. The options are that we vote to surplus it, um, and so, and at this time, it was to be used by the tenant. This, like I said, since I did this, because this was for last city council, which we didn't have, or to surplus the furniture, or Bruce Taylor, who owned the home previously, had also expressed interest in the furniture, and said they would come get it that day if we didn't want it. They do want the stove, the refrigerator, the washer and dryer.
But those stay with.
But they, 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 they stay with the house, they're, they're new, like Bruce said, no one's even, you ever used the oven? Yeah, the washer and dryer, so it is just the furniture, and like I say, sun's in the garage, sun's out back. So, we need to decide, you, as a, what you want to do with it.
So, basically, like the kitchen table, couch, so.
There was a kitchen table, yeah, there was, um, a bedroom set.
Flat screen TV.
I'm just kidding.
So, we're saying that it has a value, is that what you're saying?
Well, that, well, that, that's what he said, because at first, when the renter came, he said he wanted the furniture. But if he, if we left it there, then we were saying, okay, it doesn't have value, and when he leaves, he could take it. That's why I put this on this report, then like I say, that changed, because now he moved in and they moved the furniture out and they don't want it. And so, we need to, we either need to dispose of it, have Bruce come get it, or we could sell it. I, I, this, this was my, um, how I feel, I didn't want staff to have, so they load it up and they put it on a truck, and they park it at KSOS, or they unload it, then we get rid of it, and they load it back up and move it somewhere. That, that's could be, that's just a waste of time, so.
Just let Bruce take it?
Does he want it though?
He, he had mentioned that he did.
But I don't, I'm not sure that they, I mean, he could have taken it, they, they could have taken it in the first place.
I was gonna say, why didn't they pick it all in the first place?
Well, I, yeah, I think the first, because I, you know, when I was looking at something else, having to do with this property anyway, there was like, there were several amendments on our contract, and at first it said it didn't include the furniture, and then it did include the furniture. But we could ask him first, if he wanted to come get it, then he could, if he doesn't, do we have another option?
So, I get to surplus.
Surplus.
Yeah, or another salvage an arm or whoever.
Okay, so I think even to give it back to Bruce, we have to, you have to, as a city council, approve to surplus the furniture, because it is an asset of the city, and we're surplusing it, so we'll either give it to Bruce first, if he wants it, if not, take it to DI or to someone. Okay, so, we need to, we need to have a motion then, to surplus the furniture of our rental home.
I'll, I'll make a motion on the condition, to surplus the furniture in the rental home, located at sixty-two forty west, fifty-six hundred south, on the conditions, we checked with Bruce Taylor, and if he does not have a desire to, to take it himself, or sell it, or whatever, that we just donate it to, or the, or the chairman of the organization, preferably one that comes and picks it up, so the staff doesn't have to burden with that, except for the furniture.
Okay, the motion was made by council member Will Cox, is there a second?
Second.
Second is made by council member Hill, any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, while we're talking about surplus, so the organ back here, I know, I know you mentioned.
That was from there, wasn't it?
Yeah, that was from there.
That came out, yeah.
Yeah, and I know you mentioned that Bruce wanted it back, so we checked with him, and he does not want that.
Okay, he, he had mentioned to me that he would, but if he said he doesn't.
Yeah, he, he indicated that he did want it back, so, so all he needed to do is put a plaque on there. Now, did it go to a jam?
Yeah, the tomato jam people have used it.
Oh, they have, oh, good, oh, I might just hear it did say use.
So, we just need to put a plaque on, it was donated by his mother, or whatever it was.
Donated by Dana, donated by that last one.
Jared, that, by, from Atlanta.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But Jared's got the plaque drawn.
Oh, he does?
Yeah, so it's just a matter of ordering it and getting it put on.
Okay, okay, that's, that's good to know. Okay, um, so, we've already talked about all of our, so now we have public comments, is there any public comments? Come to the microphone and just state your name.
Sorry, I was getting tired. Yeah, it's a great discussion though, listening, my name's Natalie Christensen. I, do you want me to stay where I live, it says there, forty-six west, fifty-six hundred west? Um, I'm here because I, I have a question. My question is, why is the city keeping the dirt in the, on this west side, over here in the park? And is allowing it to be kind of a dumping ground? And then, I've got a few things I'd like to share of why I feel like that's an issue, you know, just having that there. But I first wanted to know, um, just, I just really want some insight of like, why it's still there?
Good question.
So, so I had actually brought this up to a city council meeting, uh, quite a few months ago about surplusing it, but it was motion to not surplus it. I do know that some of it could possibly be used over, yeah, north of where the public works is, to do some leveling. Um, I was hoping at the time, though, that we could have surplus it, and again, someone could have taken it and hauled it. It is on the staff, there, it's again on their list, but again, it's just a time-consuming and an expensive thing to take it and dump. Um, when, after, when it was motion not to surplus it, they spent what money they had of that time to, in that category, on our budget, to take some stuff to the dump, but then they utilized all those resources, because it is, it's an expense to dump it, and it's an expense for the gas.
So, um, I think everyone's probably aware of, a month or two months ago, there was a fire over there. Did anyone see, see that fire? So, I have pictures, I was there, there was actually some kids that kept going back there, and I keep seeing them go back there. And about two weeks before the fire, my husband was outside working, and he saw like smoke coming up from there. So, he went over there and had talked to the kids, and said, whoa, you can't be burning things back here. And they kind of like, okay, well, it was two weeks later that we then had that fire, and it was a, it was a pretty big fire. I mean, I can show you, if you want to see pictures, but then, after that, right, we thought, okay, you know, the sheriff came and says, it's okay, kids. So, they ran off, another two, two, three weeks later, I see the kids going back over there, spending a lot of time. And these are like thirteen, fourteen-year-old kids. And so, I walked back there one day, and I could see that there was like black marks on the wall, and that there were like individual things that had been burned. So, I came back out, didn't think anything of it, a week after that, I was outside, and I could smell like rubber burning. And I said to my husband, like, what is that smell? I can smell rubber, and didn't think anything of it, I went back in, and then I looked out my window, and I see these boys standing on the hill, and they got their, they're videoing it, and I see smoke coming up again. So, I go over there, and they take off running, and I tried to call them over, but they wouldn't come. When the mother showed up, he jumped in the car, and she even drove off, and wouldn't let me talk to her. So then I went down and one of the other boy's mom went and talked to them. I went back there, the boy told me there were aerosol cans that they were lighting on fire and throwing at the cement wall. They were burning tires and they were burning seats. There were shoes, there were bottles. And I came really hard on them. I says, we'll definitely call the police next time to catch you back there. It wasn't long, another two weeks after that, littler kids going all the way around the hill to come and hang out and play. The other thing that I think is a big issue is your city is your jewel, right? It's kind of like that centerpiece of your city. I've lived in Lower Ywinta. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that. Beautiful, right? Fun city town. I've lived in Syracuse. I lived in Leighton. I've lived in other places in Ogden. And, you know, having, making sure that your city is beautiful, I think is what people take away. I've had a couple, I've got three or four kids that have been on missions and we've had farewells and homecomings over there. And they ask the same thing. This is in the period of four years. Why are they still dumping over there? You know, there's sometimes mattresses. It really detracts from our city. Because this is what they take from our city is what they're seeing. So, you know, I know a lot of the neighbors feel the same way. They would love to see that, that removed. So I don't, I don't know if that's for anything, but I think that's going to continue to be a problem as long as it's a dumping ground, that you're going to have kids that are going to go back there and use that. Is that all?
Thank you. Yes, thanks a lot. Okay, anybody else? Any other public comments?
Can I just comment on that?
Sure.
I mean, we've talked about this for how long? You know, this has been an issue for as long as I've been on City Council, which is eight, nine years, right? So, I mean, we have a place to put the dirt right behind this building over here. This is the Public Works area. We have means to move it. We have a tow truck in front of it. We have people. What are we waiting for to clean this area up? No, it's, to me, it's not a vote of the City Council to say, it needs to be surplus. It's a simple directive to our Public Works Department to say, I need this moved from here to here. And I need the gate locks. People can't dump their garbage over there. That's all it is, is a directive to our people to say, let's do this done. You know, nine years we've been talking about this.
I, I agree. It shouldn't be done with it. I think it is a pretty big expense to move it. So my suggestion, I think last time is, hey, let's move it, but let's, because dirt does have value.
I think we said it.
It has a lot of value.
It's surplus value.
And surplus, we'll surplus the amount that it's going to cost us to move it to our Public Works and things and to clean that up. So I think there's a way that we can remedy that without any cost to the city. It's just surplus part of it and you.
A little bit of gas and some man.
Yeah, because they do need some after behind that.
A lot of it.
KSOS, they need a lot of it over there, so.
Yeah, they need some of it over there. I don't know that they need all of it. And the problem is, over the years, like to begin with, it was probably really good dirt and there's some rhododendron there as well. And now there's just been other garbage, like garbage, yes.
So why can't we get the fence shut off to disallow people to come in there and dump their garbage all the time? I mean, it's a gate we can close and lock.
Yeah.
That's a simple directive. It's all we had to do. Let's do this.
And I know, I know they have said that's one of their priorities they're going to start working on. But again, it's a lot of manpower, some gas and some. So it would have been fair to just have them evaluate how much they need and then if they're, because I thought the same thing. And that when it came up to City Council that one time, there were people that said, hey, you know, they were interested and we possibly could sell some of it. It could help cover those costs. But I don't, I don't, and some people will just take, I mean, I almost thought it was worth it just have them take it to get rid of the garbage, you know, that certainly needs what we need. So maybe by next meeting, I can try to have a better report of what, of that we need and what is good and what they send in. Maybe we can go for that.
Okay.
Because, you know, we won't be long on, so. Yeah. Yeah. Any other comments? Public comments?
I have, I have, just real quick, just, because I agree, I have time to discuss in our work meetings. So I think it would be a good time, like, because all of us have items we want to put on the agenda. But, you know, so maybe if we have something now, let's just cover it in our work meetings. So this is what I would like to see on the next City Council. We have, so this is a request. If you guys agree with me, great. Hopefully at least one of you will submit it on the agenda. But I would like an update on our budget. We haven't seen anything on that since, I hope, the end of April. And so I'm a little curious of what, what's going where. And obviously, I'd like to even see the ledger, you know, what, what's being spent, that kind of thing. So I would like that on our next City Council.
Right, it's kind of just interject.
Sure.
Why do we not see the financials?
I don't know.
Or the packet anymore?
I don't know.
We used to get them every, I mean, every month. We used to have our financials.
So I, so I have a little bit of clarification on that from Kami. So we had them up, so the last one we had was May. I think there was one that was an unedited version that was June. And once they start, so that fiscal year ends, they've been working on, she calls it audit prep.
She has to state it right now.
So, so right now, Kami said, as soon as she gets that done, because she would like us to start on our budget this, while I say fall, we're already into fall, but if we can before the end of the year, because we need to. And you're right with that, because I asked Kami that as well. And she said, as soon as she got her budget prep done, then she would do our financials that would be in our packet. Because I remember last year, it was the same thing, that we had signed the maze and then we didn't see the next one until it was like the first of the year, because they were working on the audit. So, yeah.
Anyway, I would like to see that. I would actually like to see the ledger too.
Yes, and I think that's good. And one thing along with that too, that we've already had in the process of, we've asked our department chairs to start working on things that they would like to see in that budget. Because we really should start working on the budget as early as December. So we have some time to talk about it. Because sometimes there's things that possibly we, they, there are a large expenditure that we need to discuss. So yes, I agree. That's a really good point.
But doesn't our fiscal year start in July?
Yeah.
It starts in July.
So should we work on our budget? Clear that in June?
Well, so we already worked on this year's budget and it was, that was what we approved in April. And that's this year, excuse me, that's this year's budget. So they.
Till June or July or next?
Yeah, so when we approved that budget in April, when Kami came, we had a couple of work meetings. And then Kami came and presented our budget. And that was from July of 2024 to June of 2025. So that budget has already been set. And so what I'm talking about, working on the budget, is for next year, starting July of 2025 through June of 2026. Because I, I think we need to, and Kami can tell you this too, because I ask her all the time. She would like to have a budget so she can kind of see, because she thinks there's maybe some things, some adjustments that we can make. But again, like I said, she said she's working on the audit prep and as soon as that's done. So hopefully maybe even December. I, I told her I would have liked it in October and she said they weren't ready, so maybe the next meeting. But as soon as she's ready with that, that, because that's a great idea.
So maybe put it in the notes too, if Kami sees this. So the big one is utility tax. Where does that go? Is it being spent? Is it its own thing? But I do know we motioned as a council to take 5% of that and put it in an emergency fund. That was my motion. I want to make sure that's, that's happening. I have no idea, so.
Well, we don't even.
I'd like that on the next, next City Council meeting.
Sure, and we don't know if you've even, like Teresa, when she was here, said we weren't receiving what we thought. Kami thinks we failed.
I know. It doesn't matter the amount, it's just the percentage of what we receive needs to go in that emergency.
Okay.
That's what I'm concerned about. And then also, last month, or maybe it was a month and a half ago, we talked and Garf came in and there was a complaint about somebody operating a business. And he came in and actually falsified his things, I think. His business license should be on our next agenda for revocation.
So there has been follow up with that by both our code enforcer and by our inspector. And so what he had on his business license was what he said. And when the code enforcer went and the building inspector went, they could not find anything that what he had said that wasn't correct. But they're going to keep following up with that. So, so that is in the works of being taken care of as far as with the code enforcer and that. Because he had, and this is one thing that's hard too, is when a resident applies and you go into inspections, you can only inspect what there is at the time. And when they went and inspected at the time, everything that was on his business license was what he said it was. So, but that, but they are in the process.
There's something on Facebook or Google Business.
And you know what? And he's, and they asked him that. And he said that he had just taken pictures of other things in order to show, this is what I'm doing as a mobile. So again, and I can follow up on that. I don't know that it's necessarily a City Council item, but it's certainly something we can follow up with with our code enforcer.
Okay, yeah, that's it. That's all I got.
Okay.
Can I just follow up with that with code enforcement?
Yeah.
How do we feel about our current code enforcement process and the people we have working for us? Is it working? Do we need to fix it? Do we need something better? Can we make it better?
So, so we currently have two code enforcers. I know they are, I know it is frustrating and I know even sometimes for our residents because they turn in complaints. That's one thing that has been on the planning commission's agenda that they're looking at is, how do we make that a little more stringent? How do we tighten that up? Are our fines not sufficient? Because right now, within according with our code enforcement, they go out, they get like one warning, two warning, three warnings. There's things, we're working on that even as far as with, I'm working on that with Brandon. Of some things that, you know, we're going to try to maybe do some legal actions above and beyond that. So, so I, I don't know. I know we do have the two now.
Do you have any others that you have besides Weaver County?
It's still, it's still with Iris, but there's someone else that is helping her.
Sure.
So we have two people from Weaver County that is working on that. And I know there are complaints that are turned into the city. I know those are given to Iris. And as far as I know, she is responding. But again, it's never fast enough for the residents because it has to go through a, through a process. But I, like I say, I know planning commission and planning commission, they talked about this yesterday. They're going to extend and have a longer work session at their meeting next week to kind of talk about that. Because one thing we talked about too is we have businesses that aren't getting the proper business license. And so they're working on that and also some of the fines.
As soon as I know we approved the candidacy to be our code enforcer, I'm sure we kind of did on a, what was it? Just like.
Our limited basis.
Just a limited basis. Like we were going to look at it again to see if there was another option because we weren't happy with the time.
Just wasn't with her.
And anyway, I knew, I know we had the discussion that we were going to explore other options and I don't know even what other options could be. Partnering with Lewis Taylor perhaps, or another city somehow. I don't know. If it's working, then that's great, you know.
Second person helps.
Second person helps.
Yeah. And we, and certainly anybody at any times, if you want to explore some other options and present those to the council for us for consideration, which is another thing too, which I was going to, so I'm glad you brought that up, Bryce, about what we, because I'm going to try, like I mentioned, to try to do these mayor reports, so everyone knows what we're going to be discussing as far as what's on the agenda. I think that's helpful for all of us. I think it's helpful for Reed. And so I'm asking you for the same consideration. If you have something that you would like on the agenda, if you can kind of do a synopsis or give us a report so we know. Because sometimes when it's just listed as a line item on our agenda, we have, we have no idea what it's going to be. And so when you turn it, you know, make your request, and Morgan, two of you that I want this on the agenda, if you just, and you don't have to do it like I did. This was just an example I found from somewhere. But if you just have some kind of a report, that these are some things that you would like to discuss and, you know, what, what your outcome would be as far as having a City Council discussing. I think that's just helpful.
Fair enough, you guys. Just, just.
Sure, and I'll, and I'll, I'll get with Kami and ask her.
You guys want it on or?
To have our financials and.
Yeah.
For just for.
Yeah, for sure. And if she doesn't have.
You may ought to have a financial for her as well, can I? Just, I think just tell her you want that.
Yeah, yeah. And if she's not ready to, I mean, the financials she probably could, but if she's not quite ready to do it next month, you still want her to come and do a presentation?
Yeah.
Next month, by what she has?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I'll ask Kami if she will do that. Okay, anything else?
Anything else in the call?
Oh, sorry. Anything else from comment, public comments? Okay, then can we have a motion adjourned?
I'll make a motion adjourned.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Fowler, second by Councilmember Northrop and Marigoni. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, motion carries and the meeting is adjourned. Kami's back, Lynn?
Yes, please.
Yes, it's set by the diversity staff, but probably is back.